Get it into the light, Eric.
I found the adjustment.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. This is City Newport Beach Planning Commission for May 7, 2020. It's our second virtual PC meeting. Does anybody know who I am? I've got my mask on. Uh-oh. There's the beard. All right. Let's do -- call to order, please. We did that. Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like Simone to do that. Please stand up and pledge.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. That was interesting. We had feedback. Thank you all who were out there in the virtual land. We have some notes about tonight's proceedings. As you can see, we have joined with other governmental meetings by going virtual. Some cities invited public comments only by submitted writing. We felt that it would be better to have a dial-in. We did this at our last meeting. We will be using one phone number tonight. I'll repeat it throughout the night for public comments. I will announce the number when it's time. And you can watch this by looking at NBTV or streaming on the Internet. Please know, though, that there's a 40-second delay between what you hear on the phone and what we see on the screen. We ask that you mute your television and electronic devices if streaming. When you call, you'll be placed on hold until it's your turn to speak. Please note, only 20 callers will be allowed to be placed on hold at a time. If the line is busy, call back. All right. We appreciate the written comments on items before us tonight. We have also distributed them to the commissioners. And with that, we will begin public comments. So, the number, I'll repeat throughout, is 949-270-8165 for public comments. You can speak on anything not on the agenda that relates to the Planning Commission I see some movement in the conference room of somebody getting up.
Mr. Chair.
Yes? All right. I forgot that. Let's do the roll call. Pardon me.
Please say "here" when I call your name. Vice Chair Wigan.
Here.
Secretary Lowry.
Here.
Commissioner Elmore.
Here.
Chair Ketting.
Here.
Commissioner Klostermeyer.
Here.
Commissioner Kleiman.
Here.
And Commissioner Rosin is absent.
All right. Back to public comments. And the same number, 949-270-8165. We'll go to the community room first.
Thank you, Chair Ketting, members of the commission. This is Jim Mosher. I thought somebody at least should comment on the format of the meetings and how appropriate they are for important hearings. Last Thursday, the city held a moderately successful zoning administrator meeting in which the zoning administrator was in the council chamber where Chair Ketting currently is. Members of the public were in the community room. It was a little Big Brother-ish, talking to somebody up on a screen, but it kind of worked when there was only one decision-maker. Here we have six or seven. We're talking Hollywood Squares on the screen. I think it's not the most effective way to have a meeting, both for the public to speak to you and for you to speak among yourselves. And I would suggest controversial things, such as you may have tonight, might be more appropriately delayed to a time when the meeting can be held in person. I can suspect that there may be people at home who have technological difficulties, thinking that they could participate from home, and then, for one reason or another, find that they couldn't. Secretary Lowry may appreciate that yesterday, the airport commission on which he sits had a virtual meeting. I thought I could participate by home. Turned out I couldn't. I called in on the number. All I got was silence. So, it's not a good way to have a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Conference room. Any other -- community room, I'm sorry. Anybody else would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Yes, none. Seeing none, let's proceed. Do we have phone calls? Somebody tell me. One, two, three. Oops. Bear with us. The technical staff is looking for the phone calls for public comments. There we go. Hello?
Good evening, Commissioner. This is David Waite. How are you?
I'm pretty good. Spell your last name.
Am I coming through loud and clear?
Yes, you are. Please spell your last name.
It's W-A-I-T-E, and I am speaking this evening on matter number two on your agenda.
Oh, you can't speak on that. Sorry. This is on anything but the agenda.
Okay, very good. Then they put me through, so I guess you'll have to put me back through when item two comes up.
Yeah, and you're at the end of the line now. I'm just teasing. Sorry. All right. Thank you for trying. Tech staff, do we have anybody else calling in? All right? Yeah, okay. Who's clearing that? Okay. Hello? Planning Commission?
Hello?
Yes?
Yes, my name is Judy Jones, and I'm just calling to express my concern on the height limits on homes that are being breached.
Here we go. Ms. Jones? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Excuse me for interrupting, but that item will be coming up shortly. This is only on items not on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's no problem.
Ah.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. Very good. All right. I'm told there are no more phone calls coming in. We're going to request now for any continuances. How are we doing?
No continuous request. Thank you.
Commissioners, any continuances? Hearing seeing none, we'll proceed on. We're going to go to the consent items. Item number one, minutes of April 23, 2020. Any comments on that, please, from the public? You can call in on 949-270-8165. Meanwhile, while we're waiting to see if the phone rings, any comments from the commissioners? Any phone calls coming in? Okay. They have to screen those. Hello? Planning Commission meeting.
Hi. My name is Robert Sommers, S-O-M-M-E-R-S, and I'm on my cellphone. And I live at 1506 South Bayfront on Babo Island. And I just wanted to encourage the Planning Commission to support the third-story massing modifications.
Hey, Mr. Sommers, your cellphone is clearer than the hard lines coming in. By the way, we're not discussing those items just yet. You're a little early.
Okay.
So, hang up and give us a call back when that item comes up, please.
When do you think it'll come up? Because I'm just on my cellphone. I'm not watching it on my computer or TV or anything like that. When should I call, do you think?
Oh, in about 15 minutes.
15 minutes? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Good luck to you guys.
Thank you.
All right. Bye now.
All right. Minutes. Commissioners, any comments? No more calls on minutes? Okay. Commissioners, no changes? Yes, Mr. Wigan?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with Mr. Mosher's edits.
As submitted with the adjustments. All right. Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
All right. Sarah. Very good. Let's have a vote on that. Are we doing a roll call on this? All right. Roll call vote, please. All right. Commissioner Rosin is absent. Commissioner Kleiman?
Aye.
We already heard from Commissioner Klostermeyer. Commissioner Elmore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lowry?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wigan we heard from. And myself, yes. So, there we go. Six with zero with one absent. Are we all caught up? No other issues there? Okay. We're now rolling into the exciting public hearing items phase with item number two. Remember now, everybody, you can speak for three minutes on the item. Please state your name clearly and give an address, if you can remember that, so that we can get you in the public record. Item two, residential design standards code and LCP amendments, PA 2019070. Site location, citywide. All right. Let's go to staff report. Presentation, summary. While they're setting it up, this is about revisions to third-floor development standards, clarification on definition of gross floor area, changes applicable to single-family two-unit dwellings in the R-B1 and RM zones.
Good evening, Chairman Ketting, members of the commission. Can you hear me okay?
Great.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to go ahead and load up my presentation. So, I'm going to stop the video for a second to get the presentation.
Chair screen.
Okay. So, can everyone see my presentation?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, go ahead and begin. So, this is a code amendment to address residential design standards. And where this all started came from the result of city council members receiving a number of complaints and comments regarding the overall bulk and mass of the newer residential development that's been constructed in the last, I would say, 10 years. And so, as a result of that, the city council held a study session last year in May and initiated a number of code amendments and directed staff to look at ways to reduce third-floor massing. They also addressed or requested that staff look at ways to reduce the height and bulk of single-unit dwellings or duplexes constructed in the multi-unit residential zoning districts or RM zone, because they are allowed a higher height limit of 33 feet total height compared to the typical 29-foot height limit normally allowed for single-family two-family development. And the last component of that was to find ways to incentivize the preservation of beach cottages. And so, it's important to understand what change that has resulted in the changes in overall building mass. So, in 2010, the city went through a major zoning code update process. And part of the goals of that zoning code update was to see if there's ways to simplify our zoning code, which was extremely complicated, but try to maintain the overall intent of our code. And so, pre-2010, the way we measured height was very unique. So, our height limit was 24 feet for flat roofs and 29 feet for sloping roofs. However, in order to have a sloping roof up to that 29-foot height limit, the midpoint of that sloping roof had to be no higher than 24 feet, which is illustrated in that exhibit. To complicate things further, we did allow for projections of imaginary roof planes, which did result in a very complicated method of measuring height. As part of that 2010 zoning code update, the overall height limits remain the same. So, 24-foot was the limit for flat roofs or deck rails, and then 29 feet remained the height limit for sloping roofs. However, instead of measuring to the midpoint of that sloping roof, we require that the roof maintain a minimum pitch of 3.12, as shown on the exhibit on the right. However, we knew that would open up the door to larger third floors. And so, a number of bulk controls were added to the code, or what we call residential design standards, to try to pull back the mass of that third story towards the middle of the structure, similar to what was achieved under the prior code. And so, as you can see, the enclosed floor area was required to be pulled back 15 feet from this front setback and 15 feet from the rear setback, as shown on this picture and represented in the home in the photo below. However, that didn't fully address the issue. These setbacks only apply to enclosed floor area and excluded covered decks and attics. It also did not apply to Babo Island, did not apply to multiple residential zone properties or RM, and also does not apply to 25-foot-wide lots within the R2 zoning district. Another thing that was changed in our code was the definition of floor area. And as a result of that, unfinished attics, regardless of ceiling height, are also excluded from these setbacks and the required openness for patios. The code's silent on that, and so that has resulted in what the community is perceived as more massive homes or bulkier designs. And so, here's a couple pictures of existing homes that have been constructed recently. The photo on the top left shows that that third-floor covered deck goes all the way out to the front of the home. The picture on the right top, that's a third-floor deck that goes all the way to the rear setback line. That's almost enclosed, but not fully. And so, that does not count as floor area. But as you've seen in the picture, it does add a lot to the visual bulk. The photo on the bottom right is a deck that's only open on one side, and as a result, it was easily enclosed by the homeowner. And the photo on the bottom left, this is a duplex constructed in the RM zoning district with three full floors, where you can see the enclosed area and deck have been pulled all the way to the front setback and the rear setback lines. So, the intent of this code amendment is to really go back and address the unintended consequences from the changes in our 2010 zoning code and really try to implement what the true intent was at that time. And it's also intended to provide more consistency in the application of our bulk control standards, or those residential design standards, to more properties citywide versus just the number of properties that it's currently applicable to. But I just want to clarify that the intent of this code amendment is not -- we're not looking at a comprehensive overhaul of our design standards. We're changing the way we're measuring height. I also want to clarify that this amendment does not result in the change in any allowed building heights. So, existing current building heights would remain the same. We're not seeking to prohibit covered roof decks, which have become more popular. Really, this is intended to just regulate them a little bit further than they currently are today. And there'd be no changes in allowed floor area as a result of these amendments. The total allowed floor area that currently can be constructed in those lots would continue. The only thing is that those third floors would be more regulated. Staff has put a lot of effort into these code amendments. As I mentioned, the city council first initiated this last year, and we began drafting our initial amendments and presented them to the public during our first community meeting back in August. During that community meeting, there was generally a lot of support for the amendments, except from homeowners within the RM zoning district. And the primary reason was because, at that time, we were seeking to reduce the height of single-unit or two-unit dwellings constructed in the RM zone. We then presented our finances to the city council at a study session back in September. We had mixed comments from the city council at that time. Some wanted to be a little bit more aggressive, and some were generally in line with the amendments we had proposed at the time. But there was general agreement that we needed to further regulate the covered deck openings to make sure that these decks are more open than currently are being provided today. We were also directed to take a look at compliance with Cenepel 330, which is the Housing Crisis Act, which has added some additional restrictions on the city's ability to adopt new development standards. And I'll get into that later in my presentation. There was a uniform agreement that cottage preservation should go forward, and so that went on a separate track, which the Planning Commission did review and was ultimately adopted by the city council in February of this year. Throughout the process, staff did meet with a number of design community members to go over the code, and that helped with code refinements. You know, we talked to a lot of architects and designers, and overall, I think there's the consensus that there needs to be some changes to the code, although there's differences of opinions on what those changes should be. But overall, I think what we're proposing can be implemented. And lastly, we held a second community meeting in March of this year. Again, I think there's mixed support. There's a number of members of the community, especially the real estate community, that was opposed to any changes, as these covered third-floor decks have become extremely desirable amenities for new homes. And on the other side is a number of community members that are seeking to further regulate the bulk and scale. But what did come out of that meeting was that there was a need to apply the front and side -- I'm sorry, front and rear setbacks to these R2 lots that are 25 feet or greater than ours. So, as I go through the presentation, I'm going to kind of group my amendments to three components. The first component is revisions to the third-floor standards. The second component is clarification of our definition of gross floor area. And then, the last component is applicability to Babo Island, the RM zone, and the R2. So, in terms of third-floor standards, again, just want to highlight, this is currently how we regulate third floors. So, the exhibit on the bottom of the screen kind of represents a side view of a structure. We currently allow for the first floor and second floor of a dwelling to completely build out to the setbacks required to that property. However, on the third floors, we are requiring that -- the code requires that the enclosed area represented in green be set back 15 feet, an additional 15 feet from the front setback line, and an additional 15 feet from the rear setback line. In addition to those setbacks, third-floor area is limited to either 15% or 20% of the buildable area, and that's all dependent on law. And so, again, that was what was intended to control the bulk on that third floor. However, as I previously mentioned, the range of the covered third-floor area is not restricted by those existing setbacks. And so, you can have a third floor that completely covers your entire buildable area. And so, this is kind of a number of photos that represent where the covered third-floor decks have really been pulled forward all the way to either the front or rear setbacks, which result in a very overpowering third-floor mass. And so, what we're proposing as part of this code amendment is to maintain the existing third-floor limits for enclosed floor area represented in green, but also apply the setbacks to any covered roof deck area, which is represented in that blue line. In addition, we're proposing that no more than 50% of your buildable area be located on the third floor, and that would cover the existing 20% of the enclosed floor area and an additional amount to address the third-floor covered area. So, this exhibit kind of illustrates that a little better. The exhibits on the left show kind of what the current code allows for. The area in green is what's currently regulated by the zoning code and limited to either 15 or 20% of the buildable area. But that covered third-floor deck is shown in that blue shading. And the picture on the bottom there is a representation of a home where that front deck is pulled all the way out. The proposed code amendment is shown on what would be achievable on the picture on the right. And so, that would require that the covered third-floor decks be pulled back those additional 15 feet and further regulated by that 50% coverage limit on the third floor. And the photo on the bottom right represents the structure that would comply with these new standards. And again, these are just other representations or existing homes that are constructed, what looks like would comply with our new third-floor standards. And as you can see, the third-floor areas have been pulled back, reducing the bulk and mass of these homes as viewed from the street. Moving on to the side setbacks. The picture on the left, or column on the left, just represents the current code. And so, again, our third-floor side setbacks only apply to enclosed floor area, and they also only apply to lots that are wider than 30 feet in width. And the problem with that is the majority of the lots in the city, especially in Kerna Damar, Babo Island, and Peninsula, are actually 30 feet wide. And so, this side stepback requirement isn't actually being applied. And the picture on the bottom left represents a three-story home with no side stepback relief on that upper level. So, the proposed code amendment would, again, apply the side stepback to both floor area and covered decks, and would also apply to lots 30 feet wide or greater to try to capture more properties that would be subject to this additional articulation standard. And as you see on the bottom, the picture on the bottom right, this is a dwelling that has been constructed with that side setback standard. And as you see, it helps articulate that mass as viewed from the street a lot better. These are photos of homes where the side elevation has not been stepped back on that third level. And so, you can see on the picture on the top left, it's just not elevations that are facing the streets, but you can tell it's overpowering on the neighbors alongside of that property as well. And these are photos of kind of that desired result as applying the side stepback. You get a lot more articulation and a lot more relief, or visual relief, to the neighbors adjacent to these structures. So, moving on to the clarification of gross floor area, focusing on the openings required for a deck or patio not to be counted as gross floor area. Prior to our code change in 2010, the zoning code required that two sides be required to be open in order for a patio not to be considered floor area. Our current code is silent, and it does not really provide any direction. So, how it's been implemented is that only one side has to be completely open, or two sides have to be substantially open. And these are photos where you can see that the opening has been moved away from the front of the dwelling towards the side, where it's less visible. Here's some photos of some of the problems associated with this. The photo on the top left, you can see that's what we've considered to be substantially open on two sides, but visually, it is very bulky. That sort of opening is also easily enclosed, as you can see on the picture in the bottom left, where it's a perfect window-size opening for our future property owner, wishing it enclosed that space. The photo on the top right shows that the opening, the one opening, is on the side of the building and not towards the front. So, from the street perspective, this looks like a fully enclosed third floor. And then, the picture on the bottom right, again, just shows how easy and covered decks, and would also apply to lots 30 feet wide or greater to try to capture more properties that would be subject to this additional articulation standard. And as you see on the bottom, the picture on the bottom right, this is a dwelling that has been constructed with that side step back standard. And as you see, it helps articulate that mass as viewed from the street a lot better. These are photos of homes where the side elevation has not been stepped back on that third level. So you can see on the picture on the top left, it's just not elevations that are facing streets, but you can tell it's overpowering on the neighbors alongside of that property as well. And these are photos of kind of that desired result as applying the side step back. You get a lot more articulation and a lot more relief, our visual relief to the neighbors adjacent to these structures. So moving on to the clarification of gross floor area, focusing on the openings required for a deck or patio not to be counted as gross floor area. Prior to our code change in 2010, the zoning code required that two sides be required to be open in order for a patio not to be considered floor area. Our current code is silent, and it does not really provide any direction. So how it's been implemented is that only one side has to be completely open, or two sides have to be substantially open. And these are photos where you can see that the opening has been moved from, away from the front of the dwelling towards the side where it's less visible. Here's some photos of some of the problems associated with this. The photo on the top left, you can see that's what we've considered to be substantially open on two sides, but visually it is very bulky. That sort of opening is also easily enclosed, as you can see on the picture in the bottom left, where it's a perfect window size opening for a future property owner wishing to enclose that space. The photo on the top right shows that the opening, the one opening is on the side of the building and not towards the front. So from the street perspective, this looks like a fully enclosed third floor. And then the picture on the bottom right again just shows how easy it is to enclose a single opening patio. So our proposed amendment is to kind of go back to how the zoning code previously regulated these decks and to require that two sides remain open. But the only exceptions would be for minimal structural supports needed to support any roof coverings, and the guardrails would either have to be constructed of transparent materials such as glass, or it can have OPEC material but has to be open, which is open guardrails so that it's at least 40% open. And as you can see on these pictures, it results in a much more open patio that would be more difficult to enclose in the future. The other component of modifying our definition of gross floor area is to address attics. Currently, our zoning code does not regulate attics as floor area regardless of their ceiling height if they're unfinished. And so on this exhibit, you can see on the bottom is a floor plan of the third floor. The area shaded in green is the enclosed floor area of that actual room. The area shaded in blue is the covered patio where the loggia. And the area shaded in red is the unfinished attic. It does have constrained ceiling heights towards the sides of the building, but as you can see, it's a rather large attic, and it maintains a ceiling height consistent with actual third floor area, as illustrated on the side elevation on top of the screen. And it adds a lot of visual bulk that's not regulated by either step backs or a floor area. And so the proposed amendment would fix the definition of gross floor area to remove the term finished. And so any enclosed space with a ceiling height of more than six feet would count as floor area and would be regulated by these step backs that we're proposing. And so the intent or the desired outcome is that designers would reduce the height of their attics, minimizing the bulk and mass associated with these attics, as illustrated in the exhibit on the bottom of the screen. And in terms of applicability, I just reminder that our current third floor standards do not apply to Babo Island. They also do not currently apply to the RM zoning district, and they do not apply to the two unit residential zoning district where the lots are 25 feet wide or less. And so these two pictures are duplexes that were constructed in the RM zone. As you can see, they're both built to the maximum 33 foot height limit, yet they do not provide any third floor articulation or step backs. And so our proposed amendment today would expand the applicability of our design standards to include Babo Island, to also include the RM zone, but only apply to single unit or two unit structures constructed in the RM zone. If a development would consist of three units or more is constructed, they would be exempt, and that was with the intent to try to accommodate that additional density that they would try to have to fit within the building envelope. But I do want to emphasize that staff is not proposing any changes in allowed building height within the RM zone. So a single family home could still take advantage of the higher 33 foot height limit that's afforded in the RM zone. And then lastly, as it relates to the 25 foot wide lots in the R2 zone, we are proposing to add only the front and rear step backs to those properties. However, because those lots are constrained due to lot width, they would remain exempt from third floor area, the side step backs, and the open volume requirements. With regards to Senate Bill 330, this is a law that was passed last year and became effective in January 1st of this year. And the intent of this bill is really to stimulate home building to address the housing shortage in the state. And so it's a complicated bill that does a number of things, but its real focus is to try to expedite the development of housing and also to provide a lot of tenant protections and prevent the loss of housing. And so someone proposing to demolish a triplex and construct a duplex that would no longer be required. But as it relates to kind of the item of course tonight, it does suspend the city's ability to downzone properties, again, reducing density. And to kind of ensure that cities don't circumvent that downzoning requirement, it also suspends the city's ability to change development standards that would result in less intense use. So for example, if the city wanted to downzone but couldn't, the city can't go around and apply larger step backs or larger open space requirements to where a site is less buildable resulting in less density. So for the item of course tonight, we're really focused on ensuring that the development standard does not result in a reduction of density, and that's going to be a number, the number of potential units that can be constructed on the property. And also that the development standards do not reduce intensity of development. And as addressed by the law, it specifically addresses height, floor area, setbacks, lot coverage, or really anything that's going to lessen the potential to build dwellings on that property. And so we took a look at how our amendments comply with SB 330. We're confident that our amendments do not result in a change in any achievable height or actual building setbacks, the achievable floor area that was afforded to these lots, or any changes in density. The changes within RM zone actually incentivize more density to be constructing these lots by exempting them if they're three units or more. We did receive some comment letters stating that our proposed third floor step backs are subject to SB 330 because they're more like step backs. But I do want to clarify that the term step backs are defined in our zoning code. And the step backs specifically relate to how large a size of a home could be constructed. Step backs result in buildable area, and that factors into our formula for maximum floor area. The proposed third floor step backs have no impact on achievable floor area or the ultimate placement of a building. All it's really doing is regulating the articulation of that third floor and placement of mass on that third floor. And the additional open volume requirements that would be applicable to now Babo Island, for example, is a standard that only encourages modulation of the building, but again, won't impact ultimate floor potential of a dwell. So that concludes my report. Staff's recommending that this planning commission hold a public hearing, receive community feedback, and then ultimately provide staff direction and recommendations to present to the city council. An additional, a lot of questions I'm receiving as staff is coming from the design community or homeowners currently undergoing a new design for their home. And that's when these amendments would actually kick in and how it would affect their plans that are in the process. And so as part of this, staff is recommending that any discretionary application that's submitted and deemed complete or any projects submitted for plan check prior to the effective date of the ordinance should be allowed to be reviewed under the existing regulations. But that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Jaime. At this point, we are going to ask the commissioners if they have any questions of staff, and if you do, please raise your hand. I will recognize you.
Request, project request right now in plan check or that's been submitted, is there, you know, if there's any, or is it something that you have to kind of go back and count? Just wondering if there's, if there's a sizable number of requests. I kind of doubt it, but just an idea if there's currently requests that would, that the current plan would be applicable to.
Sorry, I missed the first part of your question.
So basically, to your last bullet point, are there any requests currently in the planning department of any plans or approval requests for any development that would use these, these currents, current standards?
Yes. Yeah, there's several drawings in the middle of plan check or under review as part of the coastal development permit. And so part of that is why we're recommending that those existing projects be allowed to continue under the total standard.
And then I had just one question, and it's really just kind of more historical. It's just, why was, why was Babo in RM and, and I guess less than 25 foot width lots exempted back then? Was there any reasoning to that, or was it anything that kind of?
Right. So I think it's part of the RM, the intent was to provide more flexibility because there's typically more parking associated with higher density developments and more common and private open space requirements, but it wasn't envisioning homeowners developing single family homes. In terms of the R2 lots, there was a recognition that these, at least 25 foot wide lots or less, they're already very constrained. And then with Babo Island, I think the intent was to try to lead standards alone for Babo Island, but as you can see, there wasn't an unintended consequence associated with that.
All right. Those were my questions. Thanks.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Klaustremyer.
Hi, May. Thank you for your presentation. I'm curious, how does the city currently enforce the closure of some of those covered patios that you're seeing up on the third level? I've noticed around town that, you know, these new homes go up, and then, you know, a month after they're completed, you can see that these covered patios get enclosed.
Yes, so for the most part, I think our code enforcement is very reactive. So we rely a lot on complaints that are, or tips that are provided by the community to staff. In some cases, the building inspector who inspected the home, they drive by that home a week later and see that it's enclosed, and so they bring it to our attention. But generally, it has to be brought to our attention. Oh, I'm sorry. And then there's one other process. So whenever a home is under an escrow, the city, they have to go through a residential building report process. And so as part of that, there is a records search that is done, and an inspection can be requested by the potential home buyer, in which case an inspection is done and then staff can, does find, in some cases, that these patios have been enclosed and require them to be opened back up.
Jaime, as a follow up to that, how do you? Are you there?
Yeah, I hear you.
What, what do we do if an inspector spots one of these conversions illegally? What's the process to have it removed?
We notify the property owner, and then we give them time to open it back up. And then, you know, if they refuse, it becomes more of a enforcement issue where they become, they get cited with fines, and then it escalates into more of a city attorney issue. But generally, once they've been notified, they contact staff, and then we work with them to get it back, open back up again to something that's compliant.
All right. Other commissioners, questions of staff?
Can you just remind us all about the public outreach on that? What were, what were all the different meetings that were conducted? And, you know, what was attendance like? And just walk me through just a little bit of that, those discussions. Because we, we've been, as commissioners, received a lot of letters from realtors, some developers, a lot of architects, and then also residents too. So it's been a pretty hot button topic, you know, with, with a lot of folks. And a lot of these realtors are our local residents too. The, you know, Newport Beach realtors are a little different than some of the realtors in the rest of Orange County. These are folks that live in our community and are interested in seeing our community thrive. So I do take a lot of their concerns to heart because the realtors in Newport Beach are very local and community focused.
Sure. So as I mentioned, that first community meeting we held back in August last year, we provided flyers available at the counter. We created a email list of all known architects that did a lot of work in the city. If you can believe, I don't remember if we posted next door in that first community meeting, but we did try to get the word out as much as we could during any community engagement. I think it was mentioned by Simone or other outreach meetings that we had regarding these. But that first initial community meeting was pretty well attended. I believe there's about 65 attendees. And then, you know, we had the study session with the city council, which a lot of people do tune into. And then the second community meeting in March, we definitely posted something there next door. But same thing, we had new flyers provided and distributed. We had a email distribution list of people who were interested on this topic, where they signed up, and I sent out a notification of the meeting as well to the design communities that we have on our email distribution list. And I think that second meeting, it was less well attended, probably about 30 individuals attended that meeting. We also put out a, I'm sorry, a news splash. So anyone who's interested in anything related to city matters who has signed up for that, they also received notification.
And, and pardon me for not knowing, but the meeting was just conducted just via staff, you know, had a panel, some questions and answers, and then you took the comments and kind of formulated what you, what you learned from that, or just kind of walk me through how it all went? It wasn't like a council member driven committee or ad hoc or any subcommittee or anything like that? It was simply just staff driven, correct?
Correct, just staff driven. I did a presentation and answered a lot of questions from the community, and I had my staff helping me and taking down notes. Based on the comments we received, we helped formulate kind of the changes to the code, and then additional outreach with designers and architects and community meeting, or in the community. I had a lot of sit down meetings, and then just a lot of informal meetings. I talked to a lot of architects on a daily basis where I get a lot of questions asked, and I use that opportunity to kind of work through some of the ideas we have.
No doubt, you put a lot of effort and work into that and hard work, and it's probably a task that has a lot of folks on both sides, you know, commenting on and making it difficult to kind of form any type of consensus. So I appreciate your hard work on that and staff's time trying to get, get something worked out. So I'll yield the rest of my time for later, but I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Other commissioners, please? Questions of staff? Yes, Commissioner Kleinman.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. My first one is, obviously, staff has been trying to address these concerns about massing and quote unquote mansionization since 2010, when they first tried to, to address it with the initial code changes. So my question now is, what if any other mechanisms are there to potentially address these concerns? I mean, did you look at those alternatives, or is this really the only way that staff saw fit to adequately address some of the concerns about the covered patios, et cetera?
I think this is, you know, in taking into account the limits we have under SB 330, we believe this is kind of as far as we can go. That's still kind of implement the original intent of the code change in 2010 while still trying to preserve people's existing property rights, ensure that they can still build that floor area that they were previously entitled to. But this is kind of where we believe we're at.
I guess specifically, I'm, I'm inquiring about other areas that address design standards that don't also affect floor area ratio and the other, the other things that we're seeing here.
So we do, as part of the residential design standards, there are a number of subjective design standards that are included in our code, and they speak to discouraging, you know, long third floor blank walls and encourage articulation, but they're very subjective standards. Part of, and as staff, we've had a hard time to enforce some of that because they are so subjective. And, you know, we, we ask a designer to change a design, you know, we discourage them, and that's technically complying with that design standard. The other issue again is SB 330. We can't adopt any new subjective design standards. So any new design standards we do adopt, adopt have to be objective. And so it has to be very clear what we're asking for in these designs.
Okay, thank you. So my other two questions are, I guess, probably for city attorney relating to our ability as a decision making or discretionary approval body ability as a decision-making or discretionary approval body to actually address this at this time for two reasons. One, the local coastal plan and pending amendments to that. And two, of course, as Jaime has mentioned several times, SB 330. And I know it's a little bit too soon to really know how, you know, there's no case law, as far as I know, to see how these things have litigated out and to support the interpretation of the language. But my read of the language is maybe not the same as staff's analysis. So I just want to just hear some more from our city attorney on that, on both of those.
Sure. I'll defer to staff with respect to the first question. But with respect to your second, the, you know, when you're looking at the legislation, whether, what-
Sorry. Is anyone else having trouble hearing her? Or is it just me?
No.
Can you hear me okay now? Okay. With respect to the applicability of SB 330 and what cities can and can't do, I think it's really important to look at the legislative intent. Because when you look at the legislative intent, it really tells you what the, what the state was working towards in adopting this legislation. So with that in mind, I do have a few provisions of the legislative findings that were set forth in 655-89.5. And I would like to just read a few of those, just to give a sense of what we were talking about here. So in pertinent part, I'll just speak to the relevant provisions. And one of those is, "A lack of housing is a critical problem that threatens the economic, environmental, and social quality of life in California. California housing has become the most expensive in the nation. California has a housing supply and affordability crisis of historic proportions. The consequences of failing to effectively and aggressively confront this crisis are hurting millions of Californians, robbing future generations of a chance to call California home, et cetera. The absence of meaningful and effective policy reforms to significantly enhance approval and supply of housing affordable to Californians of all income levels is a key factor." And then I'll just read off one more, but there are several others. According to reports and data, California has accumulated an unmet housing backlog of nearly 2 million units. So with that legislative intent in mind, you know, what, in my opinion, the government was really striving for is making sure that we increase the supply of housing. As Jaime indicated, I don't think that we have a scenario here with these revisions that would compromise the housing supply in a way that some of the correspondence have indicated. With respect to the LCP question, I will defer on staff, because I think that they might have a little bit more, you know, information that they can provide on that.
Thank you. So, yeah. Our amendments affect both Title 20, which is our zoning code, which is like affects citywide, and Title 21, which is our local coastal program. However, our residential design standards, including the third-floor step-back requirements and open-volume requirements, those are only contained in the zoning code. They're not in our LCP. So if these amendments are adopted, they would become effective immediately. The only thing that's in our LCP that we need to amend is the definition of gross floor area, and then a clarification regarding the application of open space for the RM properties. But the overall third-floor design standards that we're talking about, those are only in Title 20, and so we would be able to implement those right away.
Okay. Thank you for all of that clarification. I appreciate it. I just, again, want to reiterate, I don't know if I'm the only one experiencing this, but I can hear everyone pretty clearly, except those that are in City Hall. But could just be me.
You too.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. By the way, staff did a very good brief analysis, but very much to the point on page 15 and 17 of our staff report, one on LCP and the other one is on SB 330. So if you need to review that again, there it is. Further questions, commissioners? Hearing none, I will now open this up to the public for public comments. You have to dial in 949-270-8165. First, we'll go to the community room. Don't see anybody in there. Oh, there is somebody here.
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, great. My name is Mark Becker. Oh, first of all, I want to thank everybody for creating a very safe space here. Feel comfortable. Everybody's wearing their mask, and they're 10 feet away from each other, so I greatly appreciate that.
Mister, excuse me. What's your last name? I didn't get it.
My name is Mark Becker. I own a home at 410 Bellevue Lane. I've owned a home in Newport Beach for 30 years, 10 years on Balboa Island, and 20 years at Peninsula Point.
Great. Thank you.
This is also my 40th anniversary of working in Newport Beach. The first architect I worked for was Brian Jeanette 40 years ago today. I'm here in support of this amendment. I talk to a lot of, I design a number of homes annually here. Mostly in the Bay Area. And the third-story massing has been a huge problem at Peninsula Point and on Balboa Island in particular. And the, all of my clients complain about it, and my neighbors complain about it, and seemingly nothing, there was really nothing to do. If most of them had their druthers, they would eliminate third stories altogether. However, that's not where we're at. So the situation we have, and I want to thank Jaime and Simone for working on this. I've participated in the community workshops. I've participated in the city council meetings. There's been good, there's been a lot of people showing up. And the first and foremost thing for me is, this has created somewhat of a domino effect. I've actually been hired to design mitigating additions to block third stories from invading in personal space in people's courtyards. We have one under construction on the oceanfront as we speak. And this is a problem, because it's creating much more mass at the community than we really need. The biggest problem with the third story is it's cut off air circulation, and it's increased shading on properties, and, which has really increased the need for artificial heating and cooling devices, which really goes contrary to any global warming efforts. Furthermore, it's, you know, it's just an overall, it's a devaluation of the people that already live there. I understand developers and realtors, and they want to maximize everything, and that's great for new buyers coming in, but there are so many residents that have been adversely affected by this. And we feel that our properties have been devalued as a result of these third-story guidelines. And we feel that what is being proposed by city is not doing anything to affect the value, because the square footage is not being affected whatsoever. It just requires the architect to be a little bit more creative and a little less cumbersome on their neighbors. So the intention of the third-story guidelines, as they were, was to reduce massing. And of course, the reality is that the extension of the covered porches that weren't addressed in that have been, have really done nothing to mitigate the mass, but they've also, a number of people have enclosed them, and it's not being enforced the way we would expect it to be. It shouldn't be on the neighbors to complain, it should be on the city to go back. Yes, sir?
No, I'm, thank you. Your time is up.
You're kidding. Really? Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, anyway, I strongly urge you to support this third-story guideline.
Okay. Mr. Mosher, I see you approaching.
Again, pardon me. This is Jim Mosher. Like the previous speaker, I'm very much in favor of restricting massing. I, in fact, would like even stricter restrictions. And I like Mr. Becker's idea that he submitted in writing of a sloping building envelope as being our standard. But based on all the correspondence you got, I do think this is a very controversial issue, and I am concerned, again, about whether this format is a really good way to hold the public discussion, and your recommendation. And couldn't really hear the deputy city attorney, assistant city attorney. But I am also concerned about the legality of what we're proposing with regard to SB 330. And it appears from the correspondence, it might be going to precipitate litigation. There was some comment about how our zoning code defines setbacks, but I believe what matters is not what our zoning code says, or municipal code, but what SB 330 intended to mean, when it says you can't change setbacks. I submitted some written comments, which are in the Part 2D of the Additional Comments that you received. I don't know if you saw them or not. There were some of my typical minor changes to the resolution. There were two substantive questions or suggestions about what's being proposed. One had to do about the calculation of the gross floor area. This is not really a new problem, but this is on handwritten page 29, and it has two different standards, one for single and two-unit dwellings, and a different standard for multi-unit 3-plus dwellings. As you know from the previous meetings, in the last year, there's been substantial changes made to where ADUs are allowed. And I'm not sure that this section has been thought through with respect to that. There's a single-family dwelling with two ADUs built on it, which is now allowed. Which of the two standards was intended to apply to that? I'm not sure that's been carefully thought out. And on the page before that, handwritten 28 and 29, the question of how we handle lots that are exactly 30 feet wide. In one section, we're imposing the stricter standard that requires the two-foot step-backs on the sides. On the previous page, we're not enforcing the stricter standard on the amount of third-floor, namely, the 15%, 20%. I don't know if that inconsistency was intentional or not. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Community room? Any further commentators? Seeing none, we'll proceed now to our phone-in. We have 11 phone calls waiting. I'd like to remind, can the people listen while they're waiting? Please try to not repeat what somebody else said. Bring something new to the party. All right. Let's go. First call. Hello? Planning Commission?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good evening. Yes, my name is Christopher Budnik, and I own property in Newport Heights. I serve on the Board of Directors of the Newport Heights Improvement Association. But as is the case for all board members, I'm only authorized to speak on my own behalf, not on behalf of association members. First, thank you for the work you're doing. It's an important job, and I appreciate your efforts. I've already emailed my concerns to you regarding your residential design standards amendments, so I'll be brief. I want you guys to encourage, I want to encourage you guys to take a look at the problem you're trying to solve first before moving ahead with these amendments. And consider a targeted approach versus a citywide implementation. I believe some of the amendments might make sense in dense areas with small lots, such as Balboa Island and the Peninsula, if a majority of those property owners agree. The third-floor step-back changes seem to make sense for small lots in dense areas, but it should be considered for lots 30 feet wide or less, not lots 30 feet wide and wider. Now, the amendments modifying gross living area calculation might also make sense, but again, only for small lots in dense areas with a real problem that needs to be fixed. I do not believe any changes are needed for larger lots. There is no bulk or mass problem that needs fixing in Newport Heights. And so I ask the commission to exempt Newport Heights from all proposed amendments. If the commission does feel a bulk or mass problem exists in Newport Heights, then it needs to be confirmed based on direct feedback from owners, and not just feedback from advocates for smaller houses. Because these amendments are so impactful, if you want to include Newport Heights, I request formal notification be sent to all owners via certified mail, based on county tax records. Please, let's not do mass mailings of small postcards to just residents that look like junk mail with a message inviting them to join a meeting to discuss quality of life. This is far too important, so proper detailed notice needs to go directly to owners based on tax records. And sufficient time must be allowed for people to understand the impacts and voice their concerns. To summarize, to me, the way these amendments are worded leads me to believe they're intended not just to address legitimate issues in areas of high density, but to unilaterally restrict the allowable size of homes all over Newport Beach. I do not see a bulk or mass problem in Newport Heights, so I request my neighborhood be exempted. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and thanks for the work you're doing once again. I hope you all stay healthy, and have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments. Hello? Planning Commission?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name is Lee Pearl, P-E-A-R-L, and I'm a resident of Balboa Island, and also the local government liaison to the Balboa Island Improvement Association. I thank you for taking the time tonight to take public input on this important item. I wanted to make a couple of comments. I've provided written correspondence. Also, I sent out, on behalf of our association, a constant contact to 1,200 of our residents. I think there is overwhelming support of the staff recommendation. Also, I wanted to give you a little history that I think is very important. In 2010, if you lived on Balboa Island, you probably would know that they were actually building three-story structures on Balboa Island. There's one on Ruby, one of the last three-story homes is on Ruby Street on Balboa Island. Overwhelmingly, the community stated, "We do not want three-story homes." And the code changes occurred, and now we're 10 years later, and we have a fix that we believe our community can embrace and support. The original proposal was initiated community, so the residents brought it forward with the support of three council members, Councilmember Brennan, Brenner, I'm sorry, Dixon and Hurtman. I want to conclude by, I'm a little concerned when I hear comments about realtors and developers, because the commission needs to really move this item forward to the city council to allow their constituents to discuss this. Because I believe the majority on Balboa Island feel that these, the proposal by staff should be approved, and we should change the standards. One of my final comments tonight is that the Realtor broadcast that went out that I saw kind of misstated it, looked like people's rights were going to be taken away for having a third-story structure. And I don't think that is what's being proposed tonight. So I think you need to, hopefully you did see what was sent out by the realtors, and you can take that into account. Thank you very much, and that concludes my presentation. But I think that it needs to be fixed, and it needs to go to the city council to allow them to deliberate with their constituents. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello? Hello. This is Jim Maloney. Can you hear me?
Yes. What's your name?
My name is Jim Maloney. I am a resident of Balboa Island. I have appeared before the Planning Commission in the past in support of the cottage preservation proposals. I've worked closely with Lee Pearl, who you just spoke with. I'm a board member of the Balboa Island Preservation Association, and you will be hearing later tonight from Jody Ball, the president of the VIPA. I am calling and providing input on the proposals. I think that Simone and Jaime did an excellent job on proposing these amendments. The amendments that were done in 2010 have created a loophole to which only certain developers and certain realtors- developers and certain real estate brokers have exploited. I have submitted written comments. I have submitted photographs and a PowerPoint presentation, which I would encourage all of the commissioners to look at. They show the handful of examples of developers and real estate agents that have taken an inch and turned it into a mile, where they create three-story massing homes on Balboa Island and the Balboa Peninsula. These lots are 30-foot wide. They are three-foot setback on each property line, and when you go up three stories, they create huge amounts of shadow. You cannot see sunsets. They devalue the properties around them, and I think that the proposals by Simone and Jaime are very reasonable and balanced. Lastly, I'd just like to address the SB 330. I know the, I think it was Commissioner Kleiman and Commissioner Wiegand who asked whether these proposals would infringe upon SB 330. I would point out that the purpose of SB 330 is to create more housing, and as a resident on Balboa Island, I can tell you, every time one of these massive three-story homes goes up, residents are displaced. There are typically residents renting back apartments over garages, and they have lost their homes. They're walking around the island looking for places to live, and the third-story houses with the roof decks and these little apartments built up on the top are not being rented out. They are not creating additional housing for anybody. These are absentee owners, and the only one making a profit off of them are the real estate agents and the handful of architects and developers who have pushed them. I'd like to comment and compliment Mr. Becker earlier, who works with Brian Genret. They have done an excellent job, but the handful of brokers and real estate developers who've exploited the loophole that has been in existence since 2010. Those folks are going to be called out for what they're doing, and I would encourage you all not to further their own monetary interest. While they may be residents, they are a handful of people who have a conflict. They are making money off of these large-scale, third-story roof decks, and they shouldn't have a voice here. The voice of the majority of the residents on Balboa Island and Peninsula should be heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments and your letter and your photos. All right. Caller number four. Hello? Planning Commission meeting.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Your name, please.
Okay. My name is Joni Martin.
All right. Thank you. Well, your comments, please. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Please state your comments. You're under the, on the clock, as they say in the NFL draft.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Joni Martin, and I'm calling, representing. Hello, I'm Joni Martin, and I'm calling representing my family, who has a home at 1824 West Oceanfront. I wanted to comment on a few things. Our family's been closely monitoring the proposed changes for many, many months. We remain very concerned about the impact adversely of these proposed changes on our property. We have retained an attorney, David Wade, who will be speaking to some of our concerns. He should be in the queue as well to comment, and he speaks on behalf of my parents who live at the property. The property's been in our family since 1937. My family, my parents have lived there for about 60 years. I wanted to address a couple of the things that came up. One was somebody asked Jaime Marillo about why the RM properties had different dimension allowances than other areas, and Jaime incorrectly said that it was not the intention to have single-family homes in the RM zones. Historically, and my family can speak to this because of our long-term history owning that property, the RM zones allowed for those greater allowances because it was a mixture of multifamily residences, some duplexes, some single-family. It's not that you weren't intended to have a single-family residence. It was that you were allowed consistent dimensions within that zone so that the houses were consistent. So that was actually not accurate, what Jaime said about that. The other thing I want to reiterate is that I don't believe this meeting format is a good format for something that's such an important topic. And when Jaime mentioned that the March 9 meeting was less well-attended, the second meeting, I can say that our family objected to that meeting being held because it was right when the coronavirus outbreak was becoming publicized, and it would have been unsafe for my elderly parents to attend that meeting. So I'm sure there are others who were affected that way, and we were pretty upset that they went ahead with that meeting. Another point I'd like to make regarding SB 330 is that I actually have spoken with the office of the senator who sponsored that bill, and the person I spoke with on their staff confirmed that they agree with our assessment, that the language and what's being proposed is in violation of SB 330.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you. Bye.
Hello? This is the Planning Commission. Can we hear you? Can you hear us? I'd suggest you try to call back. We can't hear you. Thank you. Caller number six. Hello? Planning Commission?
Yes?
Caller number five.
Caller number six, Mike Mack.
Okay. You each get a minute and a half. No. All right. Number five, go ahead. Number six, just hang on.
Okay.
Mr. Fox?
Hello?
Please, somebody speak, and tell me what, are you caller five or six? And what's your name?
My name is Mike Mack.
I suggest you try to call back. We can't hear you. Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to call back. I can hear you.
There is a delay, so go ahead and speak. Forty-seven.
My name is Mike Mack. I live in a property and own a property that I believe is in the zoning that's changed. And my question is, of the zoning areas that are affected by this amendment, how, what's the percentage of those areas that haven't been developed yet?
Well, I'm not sure, we're not sure where you live.
I live, well, I live in Corona Del Mar. What does that have?
Okay. Jaime, are you there? Yes, you are. I see you.
Yes.
Can you, I believe we may be a little off here.
Yeah, we don't, I don't have a count of how many properties that, I guess, have not been redeveloped. You know, the potential always exists even for properties that were constructed, you know, 20 years ago to be completely torn down and redeveloped. But, you know, as you drive through, let's say Corona Del Mar, a substantial number of the properties, say, majority of them, you know, are still original homes or constructed a long time ago, and so that potential for redevelopment is still there. But I don't have a count.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have any idea the number of properties who are going to lose their property rights by these changes?
I don't have a total count of lots that are affected by this amendment. Corona Del Mar, you know, is already applicable, or they're already subject to third-floor limits. This would just expand the third-floor limits to those covered decks.
Okay. But how many properties are going to be affected by these changes?
Mr. Matts, this is Chairman Kettig. This is not a give-and-take, back-and-forth. You state your concerns, and then we record it, and then we'll discuss it later in the meeting if it's appropriate.
Okay.
So we understand.
Okay. My concerns are.
Okay. I know. Go ahead.
Okay. I cannot hear, I cannot understand very much of anything that is said when you, anybody else speaks. My concern is that we don't have any idea the number of property owners in the city of Newport Beach that are going to be adversely affected by these changes. And I think that that's a necessary concern before the Planning Commission can consider these changes. So I would object to considering this change to the zoning until the Planning Commission can calculate how many people will be affected by this.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments?
Other than just a general objection, no.
All right. Thank you very much. Planning Commission?
Hi, my name is John Davies. Good evening, everyone. I live on Balboa Island, and we have two aspects that are really hurting the homeowners. The first are the new starting heights for new construction to offset the potential flooding on the island, which puts them three, four feet above the ground-level houses. And then the third-floor massing, and these new structures come up, and they really block everything, as been mentioned. There's a reduction in sunlight, a reduction in privacy, a reduction in views, and really an invasion of privacy and a feeling of congestion. So I am in favor of the suggested modifications to the third-floor massing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Caller number seven. Good evening. Planning Commission?
Hi, my name is Nancy Scarborough. I'm a long-term resident of Newport Beach. I work in the design and construction field, and I understand plans and planning. I fully support the proposed amendments. The need for this amendment exists only because of a loophole in the 2010 code. This is not taking anything away from the residents. It should not have been allowed from the beginning. The fact that prior to 2010, these enclosed third-floor areas were not allowed to the extent they are now currently being built should be considered. This proposed code revision was requested by the City Council, the current City Council, and I think that this loophole has been extensively exploited by developers, homeowners, and investors alike. Unintended consequences is a key issue here. If it hadn't been for a mistake in the 2010 code revision, we wouldn't be talking about this tonight. I strongly encourage you to vote yes to approve these much-needed amendments. I would like to also thank Jaime Marillo and the planning staff for the thoughtful review and recommendations for these code amendments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening. State your name, please.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Andrew Getz. I'm an architect. I'm a resident of Corona Del Mar, and if I could have three minutes here? Am I live?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thirty years' subject matter tonight, and I'm in favor of the recommendations that the Planning Commission is putting together, but I do have some concerns in the fact that what's really the underlying cause of everybody is the massing. And if you just forget about having a three-story house, we still have a 29-foot height limit with the sloped roof or 24-foot height limit with the flat roof. So there's nothing that would prohibit going up to 29 feet in your yard setback or your rear yard setback. So my suggestion would be to continue this issue a tad bit more, since there's a lot of community that's now looking at the subject matter and a lot of other potential outcomes that could benefit what we're trying to achieve. And that's all I got for you.
Thank you very much. Hello? Planning Commission meeting.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, I was holding for my turn.
You're up, and please turn down your television.
Yes. Is it my turn now?
Oh, yeah.
It is?
Yes.
Someone's speaking, an architect's speaking.
I can hear you. Speak up, please. We can hear you.
There's an ar- Oh, okay. It's my turn? Okay.
Yes, you've lost 20 seconds.
I guess there's a delay online. Okay.
Yes, 20, 30, 40-second delay, please.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay. My name is Don Abrams, A-B-R-A-M-S. I'm a real estate broker and a homeowner on Balboa Island. I own two homes. They're both older homes, one built in 1937, the other built in 1940. I love old homes, and I love new homes. And I love Balboa Island, I think, as much as anybody in the world. I'm against these changes. Just the title, "Third-Floor Massing," is so pejorative and inflammatory. Why not call it "Housing Murders"? I mean, really, this whole title and this whole idea is against the homeowners. This doesn't favor people who own houses on Balboa Island. I have a house now, my house built in 1940, that has a third-floor roof deck where I've been sheltering in place during this coronavirus. The only thing is, mine doesn't have a covered patio on top, and I've got such a bad sunburn, I have to stay inside now. So these covered patios on the third floor are some of the most beautiful things. I'd love to take you through some of the houses that we sold with them. I think you'd have a completely different idea. The whole idea that this is massing or this is, this is a bad thing is just turning logic upside down. I know three architects, Ian Harrison, Bill Gadero, Chris Brandon, they're three of the best architects in the city. They all think these changes are a big mistake. The one thing about Balboa Island, I'm not sure you realize, is that we can only build one and a half times our lot after deduction for setbacks. Some of the other areas can build two times. So their homes are more massive to begin with. On the island, with only one and a half times, we're less dense to begin with. So having these third-floor roof decks only balances out the fact that we don't have two times a lot. So these are some of the least massive houses being built in the city. They're just providing shelter, coolness, and beauty to Balboa Island, and I urge you not to, not to let this go any further. Don't make, this is an idea brought up by a few people who just don't like new houses, and they want everything to stay the same. I love cottages probably more than anybody. I'm a founding member of the Balboa Island Museum, so I take preserving cottages in Balboa Island very seriously. But these new homes with the, with the roof decks are credit, and change the name. Don't call it "Third-Floor Massing." It's just so pejorative. I guess that's, that's all I want to say right, right now, but please don't pass this. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and be safe, everyone.
Thank you. Hello? This is the Planning Commission. Can we help you?
Good evening. Thank you for taking my call. A few comments.
What's your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Wallace Roedecker, R-O-D-E-C-K-E-R. I live at 328 Poppy, and I own a business at 2823 East Coast Highway. So I wanted to chime in on a couple of things. Number one, I really like the, the format and the ability to have dinner and participate in the Finding, Planning Commission, and I can tell you, my wife likes it. Number two, the only thing that I would add to that is- Number two, the only thing that I would add to that is, the elevator music, while appreciated, is not very informative, and I can't listen to the meeting or hear what the other speakers spoke to, so it's difficult to not repeat what they said.
Are you sure your stereo isn't on?
Is my stereo on?
Yes.
No, no, I have nothing going on here.
All right.
So just a bad phone. So in any case, if you would be able to put the meeting on the hold so that people could listen to it, they'd be a little better informed by the time they get to their spot. As to the subject, I have concerns about it. I have a very small home on Poppy, on a very small lot, and I'm concerned, we wanted to remodel the home for quite some time, and I'm concerned that the setbacks that you're talking about for the third floor are going to dramatically restrict an already small lot into being financially undevelopable. So I heard the comments about the floor area ratio not changing, and I'm not quite sure how you can pull that off when you've only got 50 feet of lot, and you want to put 15 in front, 15 in back, and that only leaves 20 feet left on the top floor. So that's one of my concerns. Is it too early to speak on the other subject about the city signage for PCH?
Yes, that's going to be in a little while. Thank you on that.
Okay, all right, so then to this issue, I understand the concern about wanting the smaller third floor, and the shading, and the architectural aspect of it, and I don't disagree with that. I'm just concerned that as it applies to my home, I won't be able to develop it, and I won't be able to build on it. I'm wondering if there'll be any special consideration given to smaller lots, or lots like mine that are basically the smallest on this side of PCH on Poppy.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You bet. Caller number 11. Hello, Planning Commission. Hello there, can you hear us?
Hello, my name is Randy Black. I am a native of Newport Beach and a homeowner on the Bayfront. My family has owned property in Newport Beach since 1926. I am a real estate broker, real estate lawyer, and real estate investor for over 30 years, and I strongly support the proposed amendments to the residential design standards regarding third-story massing and definition of gross floor area. These proposed amendments are necessary to maintain property values in the city. The existing charm and character of the affected neighborhoods support their very high property values. Too many of the newest properties detract from this charm and character by building to the limits of the existing design standards and creating unsightly three-story boxes that unfortunately resemble the tall skinnies of Huntington Beach. Deterioration of property values follows this sort of unregulated, out-of-control construction. We need to preserve the unique qualities of these neighborhoods, to make them a desirable place to live, and to ultimately preserve and enhance the property values in our community. There is some discussion about property rights. Well, all city planning, zoning, and development regulations could be said to restrict the rights of a property owner to do exactly as he or she pleases, regardless of the effect on the neighborhood. But the purpose of regulations is to protect the property rights of adjoining landowners to enjoy their properties by preserving the existing character of an area, and to provide that further development will take place in a manner consistent with existing neighborhood uses. These amendments are necessary to protect the rights of the neighbors in these neighborhoods, and I do strongly support them. They do not reduce the building area and are effectively just technical corrections to conform the residential design standards to their original intent. These amendments will help maintain property values and property rights in the affected areas, and I urge you to adopt them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Staff, do we have any other, we have another call? Hello, caller 12.
Hello.
We can hear you. Hello?
There's another guy still talking.
Mute your television, please.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
I'm on, all right. My name is Art Pease. I live in Corona Del Mar, longtime resident. Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I'll start over. Are you with me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what do you want me to do?
Speak, give me your comments on the agenda item.
Okay, if you're prepared, I'm prepared. Okay.
Please, I'm waiting to hear from you.
I'm hearing myself on the TV. Okay.
Yes.
Anyway, we'll get it on the record.
If you turn your TV down or off, it'll be easier.
Okay. Okay. My name is Art Pease. I'm calling in opposition to the proposed amendments.
Thank you. Any other, do you have any specific comments?
Yes, I do. I want to say that the RM zoning is a unique and special application that was created for specific intent, a higher-density development. And if you look at the history of what the city's done, they've already taken away floor area ratio, increased it to the point where it's been diminished in the RM zoning, and now there's a second application of which we're going to be penalized for no apparent reason. I can see Balboa Island, it's unique. I can see the R2 zoning, it's different, but the RM zoning, I think, should be eliminated for consideration for these proposals, because it doesn't fit the intent of what the zoning is for, a higher development, a higher-density development. And you're just, the few people that are left that haven't developed are going to pay the price for having not developed yet, because they can't develop to the extent that their neighbors already have, contrary to what the previous caller just made reference to. The people that are left are going to be penalized because they're going to be, end up with less than what the previous or the people have developed to, the standards that they've already developed to. So I would ask you to oppose that.
All right.
And eliminate RM from the whole issue altogether.
Thank you for...
That doesn't apply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller 13.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Charles Klob. Firstly, as Jim Mosher has mentioned on several occasions, this is an awkward forum to conduct public input, and I know that's not your choice, but it is what it is. Secondly, I completely support the staff recommendation, and I pray that you don't dismantle it in some fashion by conditioning it or changing it from what they have proposed. And lastly, I am critical of the staff on many occasions, but to be fair, when they've done a great job, they deserve to be recognized, and Jaime, and Simone, and the staff have done a great job researching this and modifying this such that it is in its final form, and I pray that you support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And by the way, are you still there? Nope. Okay. Caller 14, please. Hello?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. State your name, please.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is David Waite. I'm an attorney at Cox Castle &amp; Nicholson, and I am speaking this evening on behalf of the Martin Family Trust and their property at 1824 West Ocean Front. I assume you can all hear me, and that I should proceed.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I am here to supplement the items that we set forth in our letter that we submitted to the Planning Commission earlier this week that I trust you have all by now received and reviewed. As we stated in our letter, we believe that the changes that are being considered by the Planning Commission this evening raise significant legal and policy questions. First and foremost, they directly conflict with the plain and explicit language of the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. Second, they would result in spot zoning in subject districts. And third, they're simply not fair to the property owners who've been planning to redevelop their properties to their fullest potential for years, as have many other property owners who've already had that opportunity to do so. I want to specifically focus on the Housing Crisis Act, because I think that that's one issue that has been raised earlier this evening by not only your city attorney, but also several members of the Commission. And I want to specifically call out the fact that the Housing Crisis Act forbids any new development policy, condition, or standard that would result in less intensive housing in subject cities, including the city of Newport Beach. In particular, the Act specifically includes examples and standards that could result in less intensive housing use, including reductions in height, density, floor area ratio, newer increased open space or lot size requirements, and new or increased setback requirements. This is explicit in AB 330. This is not interpretive, it is explicit. And I think contrary to your city attorney's view that we have to reach to the legislative history, here again, we have very clear and explicit language in the Act that doesn't specifically relate only to density and the creation of more housing. It is specifically focused on the intensity of housing. So we really need to keep that in mind as we look at the impact of AB 330 and the Act on changes that you're proposing. In particular, what Item 2, what the proposed changes would do, is exactly what the Housing Crisis Act prohibits. Among other things, it introduces new and increased setback requirements, and it redefines those terms in a way that will functionally reduce the maximum gross floor area for the buildings on the third floors of the properties in the affected districts. The staff report for this item suggests that the changes before you would simply require more articulation and transparent covered patios on third floors. The standards would do much more than that. Development subject to the standards would not be able to be built out on their third floors to the extent that they currently can be so built, leaving them with less habitable and occupiable space on the third floors. I think the staff report is quite clear in what it presents in terms of the articulation and the result in less buildable area, less habitable space on third floors. So imposing these new development standards would clearly violate the Housing Crisis Act. I want to talk about spot zoning for a minute. The changes that would specifically affect my client, they would have the effect on spot zoning...
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. We will review your letter again. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening.
Very good. Caller 15. Hello? Caller 15.
Yes, my name, hi, my name is Jim Kasuba. Hang on, let me turn off the TV.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Jim Kasuba, and I'm concerned about these new requirements, and I'm actually against it. And my opinion is that these changes could be a good thing for higher-density neighborhoods, tiny lots, Corona Del Mar, Balboa Island, the Peninsula. I could see it makes sense now, but when you get into areas where the lots are larger, like Newport Heights, I don't think there is a problem that these actually are going to restrict what we can do with our property, but now the lots are large, and it really doesn't seem to be a problem up here. I don't really hear of many complaints from the area. And in fact, the home just was built next door to me where they fully utilize the third-floor rules, and actually, it's a very nice property, and it's very desirable, and I really would like the ability to do the same with my property. So I'm against these changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Caller 16.
Hello? Yes, hello. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and your dedication in putting this item on the agenda this evening. My name is Jody Bowle, and I am the Chair of the Balboa Island Preservation Association. I don't know why, but I can completely hear myself echoing back, so it's a little difficult, but I'll try to get through it. The comment "unintended consequences," I think is probably one of the biggest understatements of the evening. The third-story allowance, I believe, was one of the worst infringements for the Balboa Island community in probably 40 years. Balboa Island is an iconic cherished location for 100 years. People come from all over the world to walk the island, to view the beautiful cottages, the uniqueness, and the neighbors and the community gather and enjoy each other's company. That is the history and the legacy of Balboa Island, and many of you have probably experienced this in your life as well, and your family has experienced it. What we have now is construction of massive, out-of-scale homes that should have never been built and been allowed by code to be built, because it has completely changed the history, the ambiance, and the character of Balboa Island. Now, we haven't lost all the cottages, and there's many, many great real estate agents that desire to keep the cottages and want to sell and retain the cottages. But Commissioners, many of these cottages don't even get put on the market. They're backdoor deals that are happening with investors, and they're selling the third story as a benefit. And many of these investors don't even live in California. Now, Ms. Summerhill commented about the lack of available homes for sale, and this is true, because homes are no longer being sold to individuals. They're now part of Wall Street and investors. And so our families and our children can't even afford any of these homes. So please do not encourage the investors to continue to double up four or five different individuals and groups in investment firms to rape and pillage beautiful communities such as Balboa Island. So I really encourage you to pass this amendment, this loophole that as we see it, it would be greatly appreciated by our residents, by the community, and visitors that have come from all over the world that are stopping coming to Balboa Island because they don't understand the changes.
Thank you.
One last...
Thank you for your comments tonight. We have other people waiting on hold. I appreciate it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I was going to give you something brand-new as you asked for it, but that's okay.
Good night. Hello? Hello, Planning Commission calling.
Hi, this is Erin Walsh Maloney.
And, you know, just briefly, I'll tell you that I'm a resident of Babo Island, and I live in a cottage, and I own a historic cottage. I'm a member of the Babo Island Preservation Association, and I think that it's the general consensus down here that things have gotten a little out of control with building. So if we could just restore the rules back to what we had in 2010, I think that's a reasonable, you know, a reasonable thing to ask.
Thank you very much. Do you have something else? Guess not. All right, number 18. Hello?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. What's your name, please?
Hi, my name is Ryan Gunderson. I live in Newport here, and I'm a real estate agent on Babo Island. My family, my parents, grandparents, brother, all live on the island. My wife and I lived there for eight years, and I was on the Board of Directors of the BIAA for six. And love, love cottages and have personally owned and preserved one. My comment would be, not to be redundant to others that have spoken before, would be that these potential changes, it's our view that they could actually be detrimental to values in the long run. We've seen it time and again from actual examples where homes that have these third-floor roof decks that are popular, they are just selling more than the ones that don't if you have a like for like. And one of our concerns is just values for property owners in general on the island that we've seen some residual effect where that could go down even to the cottage owners because we'll get comments from potential buyers who are looking what homes would sell for later on. And I would also add that it is not just developers who are building these homes. There are a lot of homeowners who are choosing to build custom homes, and we represent cottages, homes somewhere in between, and the new homes. So we're just pro-Babo Island, period. And I understand this is a complex issue. I completely understand where the other side of the argument might be. But I would also reiterate what I heard before, which is that, one, our codes on the island already are such that we can build less than some areas, other areas in the city. And then, two, my other concern with the proposed changes is that now that there have been 10 years of homes like this, what happens in the future going forward when someone wants to build a new home next to one of these homes? I think there was an earlier comment that, are you inherently, as someone who wants to build three years from now, now at a disadvantage to your neighbor? So I understand this is complex. I really thank you all for your time. And again, if there's anything that is pro-cottage and will help the restoration of cottages, we are there. We're just seeing that the values are clearly showing us that the buyers seem to like these and that homeowners do, too. Otherwise, I don't think this would be an issue because people wouldn't be building them if they weren't popular. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Caller 99.
Hello?
Hello?
Please turn down your television. You'll hear better.
Yes, I'm going to walk away from where I am and not listen to the other comments. Hello? Yes.
Yes.
I'm able to talk now. I'm able to speak. Are you able to hear me?
We are.
Am I on television? Because I'm not near a television.
No, you're not.
Well, I could go to a room where I am.
No, you're not. But your voice is. It sounds very nice.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What's your name?
My name is Shirley Galnick, and we own the property on 106 Pearl adjacent to probably the property that has triggered this action. And they are our friends, but I feel differently about the, I enjoy the cottage. Am I on live TV? I've walked away from my streaming TV. We have seven TVs in our house in Pasadena area. Sorry.
No, you're not.
God, I hope I'm not on TV.
Good to hear you, though. You got any further comments?
We are for the new proposal, but because we are in the process of redoing, we are contacted a longtime architect from the area that was recommended, has been recommended for us to be able to change our house, our cottage, to add a little second story. So we can open up the downstairs and make it a more livable place so we can go down there and have our, enjoy our family down there more often than we do now. We have an R2 property. We obviously are now keeping the R2 property. We've always been very selective about our tenants because all our neighbors are very important to us. A neighborhood is important. Am I talking to someone?
Yes, everybody. Everybody is watching, listening to your voice on television.
I'm on TV now?
No, you're not. Your voice is, though.
Oh, dear. Oh, my.
You're doing a fine job.
Oh, dear. Oh, dear. I'm going to come back in here. Thank goodness, I'm, yes, I'm not being sensible. We've waited until all these years. We bought the property in 1993 in order to be able to use it more and more as we got older. And of course, we're now in our 70s and realize the acreage and the hilltop that we live in the hills between Pasadena and Glendale won't work for us all our lives. And we love our neighbors, and we realize that the mansionizing doesn't work. We were, our original thought was to scrape the house.
Cheryl? Cheryl?
We want to keep tradition.
Shirley?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you've gone over the limit. You did a good job, though. We appreciate your call in.
Have I been on TV?
Yes, you have.
Oh, dear. Oh, my goodness.
No, I'm teasing. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that is all. 19 callers. All right, so.
And we.
I can hear people talking. You're going to clean that up? All right. Commissioners, have any questions? This long-winded, very unique request for these changes. Do you have any questions, Commissioners of staff, after hearing this? While you're thinking, oh, there's one. Mr. Elmore.
Yeah, question of Jaime. When you guys were going through all the materials and putting this program together, did you take a look at the bifurcation of implementing this, not as a blanket over the entire city, but in terms of areas that have larger lot sizes like Port Streets or the Heights versus implementing it in more dense areas?
No, so we took a look at, or we're comprehensive, how this would apply uniformly to all the R1, R2, and RM zone lots. So the Port Streets, that's a planned community. Their zoning is completely separate from this amendment. Most of the newer development, say, I don't know, 70s, is outside the R1 or R2 zoning. So what we're really looking at is the communities in Newport Heights, the Peninsula, Corona del Mar, and these different islands are the areas that this amendment would apply to.
Right, but some of the comments that came up, people are asking is, you know, it may not be necessary difference. Did you take a look at the implementing this in some areas versus not in other areas? Did you study that?
I think we focused more on the smaller lots to make sure that these new standards wouldn't take away from the ability to construct the floor area that they're entitled to. We don't typically see these standards as being a constraint to larger lots. It's really the smaller lots that start getting constrained with all these different standards. Newport Heights lots are significantly larger, and just in terms of all the plans we look at, typically, those homes don't even build to full potential. And it's pretty rare to actually see a three-story home in Newport Heights because they have so much more room to plan out their floor plans. But it's really the island and the smaller lots on the Peninsula where the lots are so much more constrained that people actually want to go up to try to fully maximize their building envelope. So our focus is a little bit more on the smaller lots and making sure we're not impacted too much by these standards.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions of staff? While you're looking through your notes, something came up that I'd like the Assistant City Attorney to readdress on staff, an attorney named David, I think, Waite? Not sure if I even spelled it correct. He really brought up some interesting comments from SB 330 regarding intensity, setback reduction, diversity, reduced height, that in the state code now, are we really in compliance with that?
Chair Ketting, we do believe that we are. We are not modifying the height by adopting these. If the Council and the Planning Commission did go about doing so, we would not be modifying the density. I think the hook is relying on the setback versus the step back. And so really, from the floor, from the bottom level, no setback is changing. We are requiring articulation, or we would be requiring articulation of that third floor, but the setback from the bottom level would still be the same.
All right, well, I think he's weighing a lot on the third-floor setback as a reduction is the way I heard it. Just curious. I have a few other questions. It was brought up by one of our Commissioners about code enforcement, and it looks like that will have to be increased to get this to be fair if people have, you know, added windows and doors and made it a room rather than an open-air thing. Staff, are you going to stop processing any applications for these items? Or once they got in the door, you're going to let them go through, depending what happens here, or will they have to be modified?
So that's our recommendation, that any plans that are currently under review, that they be allowed to continue under the old rules just to maintain fairness to those individuals who have spent the money and the time to go through the design process. So if the City Council chooses to adopt these amendments, what we'd like to put in place is, upon effective data, this, any new applications or any new submissions would be subject to these newer rules.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, I took a tally, and it seemed of the 19 phone callers, it seemed to be overwhelmingly in favor of the staff report. I did hear several comments that this format may not be the best format to listen to arguments, debate with applicants, future applicants, et cetera. So I'm going to throw out something. Is this an element we would like to tackle tonight, or do you think this needs to be readdressed once we're not in this format? I'd like to hear from you.
So I guess my question, I just want to make a clarification. So the goal for us is to recommend this to City Council. Is that right, Simone or Chair?
So Simone Gerger is Community Development Director. We would like a recommendation from the Planning Commission, but if the Planning Commission decides this evening that this forum is not the right venue, and they would like to kind of hold off on this item to a later date, that's the Commission's discretion to do, and we would just like to get a majority vote this evening on whatever direction the Commission would like to take.
And if we were to vote on it tonight, and let's say by example, if it was to be approved, it still would need to be implemented by City Council. It's not set in stone. This is just pushing it up to them for their final vote, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So there could be, depending when they take it, or if they take it in this format, or wait and take it in an open hearing, the public could speak to them directly on that. Commissioners? Mr. Wigan?
Yeah, I'm almost there on this one. There's much to like, and I do think, though, this format isn't entirely the best format. We could tell with some technical difficulties along the way, just in that aspect. But, you know, I want to know if it's outside of this thought process that I'm having is to bring it back to one more community discussion, but create some type of more of an ad hoc. I don't know if it would require maybe one council member, one Planning Commission member, a member of the Babo Improvement Organization, maybe CDMRA, you know, kind of a group of folks plus some either realtors or architects that are pretty well-versed in Newport. And I think this can be fine-tuned a little bit. I think there's a component of this that I think applies mostly to Babo Island and CDM Village. And I really would like to incorporate a lot of that, but I don't know if this is the appropriate place. Obviously, it is. It's a Planning Commission, but through the Zoom process, I don't know if it's appropriate. So I would be interested in continuing it and opening up for one more further discussion, bringing in all of the groups to have more of a consensus built. The amount of letters differ from the amount of public comments that we received tonight. So there was a whole host of letters that we, as Commissioners, received from folks, not just residents supporting, but also some residents opposing, but also residents that are in the home building industry that live in the city. So I just don't want to jump too far ahead if we're not comfortable tonight. But I can make some modifications to some of the ordinance that I don't think is overly severe. I just don't know if it's the appropriate setting for me to do so. So I'm happy to discuss it further with Commissioners, or just simply look to either continue it with some of the ideas that I'm going to propose, or if we just create either an ad hoc committee that brings in a larger contingent, not just the staff outreach to community, but more of an actual legislative body that gets this a little more fine-tuned. And I'm just kind of speaking out of a whole host of sorts here, but not sure if there's any appetite for that with the Commission at all.
I see Mr. Elmore's hand. Please.
Yeah, just to kind of jump in. So I was at the March 9 study session, and I've been following this pretty closely. I think staff's done a tremendous job at surveying the community. I was listening to the Q and A, everybody providing their opinions, everybody, Jaime taking notes, giving explanations. I thought it was very interactive, and the room was relatively very filled, and everyone was engaged. So I don't think, I think staff's done a thorough vetting of this process, and I saw it firsthand. I think the cotton is very complex, but the project, what they put together, I think deserves, I mean, whether we decide this forum's right or not is one thing, but I think it deserves a vote tonight.
And I'm just kind of speaking out of a whole host of sorts here, but not sure if there's any appetite for that with the commission or not.
All right. I see Mr. Elmore's hand, please.
Yeah, just to kind of jump in, so I was at the March 9 study session, and I've been following this pretty closely. I think staff's done a tremendous job at surveying the community. I was listening to the Q and A, everybody providing their opinions, everybody, Jaime taking notes, giving explanations. I thought it was very interactive. And the room was relatively very filled and everyone was engaged. So I don't think, I think staff's done a thorough vetting of this process, and I saw it firsthand. I think the cotton is very complex, but the project, what they put together, I think deserves, I mean, whether we decide this forum's right or not is one thing, but I think it deserves a vote tonight.
Yes, Commissioner Kleinman.
So I too think that staff has done just a tremendous amount of work on this. To me, it's clear that the city has been trying to address these concerns for a decade. I agree, we did get a lot of letters. I didn't personally take a tally of, you know, where everybody fell on each side of this discussion. It does seem to be, like everything else right now, a pretty divisive issue. But I do think that it seems that we have been trying to make this happen for quite some time. I don't think we need additional community engagement on the issue. However, I would definitely mirror some of the concerns about this being not a particularly strong forum. And for me, I don't, I think it's our job to vet everything that comes before us. I don't agree with the idea of punting something to city council that may not be fully ripe for consideration. I would be supportive of staff submitting this draft amendment to the state for their review and blessing before we continue to waste their time and council's time on this and have people continue to submit their comments. If it's something that we are not within our right to even impose. And in my reading of it, and certainly I'm not the city attorney, but the language to me does seem clear. I agree with the city attorney about the intent of SB 330. But as with many of the new bills and everything else that's coming down from the state, they're not as clear as we would like them to be, and many are in conflict with the underlying intent. So when I read the language of lesser intensity, I read it to include the things that we're talking about here, which would be reduction of floor area ratio for most people who would otherwise have considered some of this third-story square footage. So I would be in favor of them taking, staff taking this to a submittal to the state, informal submittal to the state, just to get their review before we continue to spend time on it.
All right, thank you. I'm not going to twist orange, anybody else have any comments? Mr. Lowry?
Yeah, I'll pipe in. I'm in agreement that I think a continuation at minimum, to put this into a little bit better form, but also with what Commissioner Wigan has spoken about in terms of, you know, I don't know if we can do it at this body, but somewhat of an ad hoc committee because, you know, I see both sides of this, and this is a very complex issue. And I see the bulking issue, but I also see, you know, this also is private property, and I think I have private property rights concerns. I also can see the bulk of the property concerns. But I'm with Commissioner Kleinman on this. In finding six, I'm, as much as maybe personally, I don't like SB 330. I can't, and the staff has done a great job, guys, so I'm not, this is no criticism at all. But that is such an area we, I don't have a firm grasp on yet. I would just like some type of review with that because I think from the correspondence that we've seen, we can pretty much guarantee litigation as is. So specifically on that issue, on number six. And I would just like to vet this a little bit more. And I have more than just that concern to be able to, I think we could maybe bring the parties a little closer in line, or at least, and maybe fine-tune just a little bit on somewhat of a little bit more of an outreach. But, yeah, I don't think I could vote for this as is. And really, finding six is where I'm really concerned in this day and age.
Commissioner Klostermeyer, any further additions or detractions?
Yeah, I'm sitting here listening to both sides of what the fellow commissioners have presented. And while I appreciate the property rights of owners, I do have concerns about this not being passed through the state because of SB 330. That being said, I do think that staff has done a good job of trying to address some loopholes that are in the code for the last 10 years. And, you know, as a resident of Corona del Mar, I've seen a lot of these larger, bulkier buildings go up. And I think what we're doing here does a very good job to address that. So I would be supportive of moving this forward tonight.
Of moving it forward or not?
Of moving it forward.
Okay.
I'm hearing that many of the fellow commissioners don't feel comfortable doing that. But given the public outreach that has happened over the last year with part of the presentation that Jaime put together highlighting those meetings, I would feel comfortable with this moving forward.
All right, very good, thank you. My concerns were several in here. One, you know, just some unanswered questions. By the way, I think this is one of the best staff reports I've seen with the graphics, the summaries, the examples. It was easy to follow, easy to understand, so I commend the staff on that. But I think this SB 330 might come back to bite us, not sure. So I don't believe we need another public forum, another sit-down. I think the staff in the city over the last number, this last year and a half, have really gone out and got comments. You're never going to get everybody to agree on everything. But I think maybe we delay this, in my opinion. Wait and see how the format goes down the road, maybe it's 30 days. I mean, it's, I don't think, this is urgent, I'm looking down at staff. So I think it could be cleaned up a bit. And can we send it to the state ahead of time? Or they won't look at it until our council establishes this?
You know, we, again, Simone Georgis, Community Development Director, we have sent some questions to Legislative Council to get some feedback. It's really unknown whether we will get any direction from HCD or even Ledge Council. We haven't gotten anything yet, and we've sent it about a month ago. So we could definitely try to get some input from the state level, either HCD or Legislative Council, but there's no guarantee we'll get a timely response.
All right. Maybe that would, is worth a try, stretch this out a little bit. Yes, Mr. Wigan?
I just wanted to ask Jaime, the person who called in from the law firm that was heavily pushing on the SB 330, was that related to property on the Peninsula? Or was it related to other parts of the city? I'm just...
Ocean Boulevard.
That was related to property located on the Peninsula within our R1 zoning district.
Do you think if we took the Peninsula out? And that's some of these changes that I would be pressing for as far as the modifications to what I'm looking at. You know, there's certain spots of this that I think apply best on Babo Island and Corona del Mar. And I would like to eliminate the Peninsula from some of the discussion on some of the items. And I'm wondering if that will eliminate our potential to have litigation related to 330. I'm sure it's always something that could come up, but I'm just, you know, this is something that I was looking at prior to that conversation or that. And I'm just thinking maybe that would help ease some of those concerns if we discussed a little further here tonight, some of these potential changes that I could support that would affect Babo Island and CDM, but leave the rest of the city open for the time being. I mean, obviously, this is something that will go to the council, so we can hammer it out tonight. And then the council, if, you know, approved from us, council will have that discussion to move forward to as well. So speaking to some of the commissioners who would like to move forward tonight, you know, we could talk about that moving forward as well. So I'm happy to discuss with everyone anything and everything. I just don't know if it's the appropriate place to do it on a Zoom meeting, if it's something that's not extremely urgent, where we should be hammering this out in a, you know, more open forum like we do in our normal settings. So, you know, I'm kind of either or, but just looking more for guidance, I guess, from my colleagues.
All right, I'm going to try to provide the guidance right now with a motion to continue this, have staff take in consideration comments that we heard by phone, some of the ones by commissioners. And Simone, you're, the city should attempt again to try to reach the state legislatively as well as HCD. And if we get none, bring it back, and we'll clean it up and send it up. That's my motion.
Chair Ketting, just to be clear, would you like to continue it to a date certain, or just leave that open?
I think we have to leave it open until we get word back from the staff, how long it'll take. I could see it 30 days, yeah, plus or minus. Mr. Wigan?
Yes, as a legislative employee, I can attest to the lack of speed on some of this stuff right now due to COVID. Ledge Council is closed on certain aspects, so that could be a potential long haul. So I don't know if we'll get an answer anytime soon with something as minor as a Newport Beach ask when we're dealing with much bigger things. The legislature can't even properly decide how they're going to be meeting moving forward and how the legislators can all convene with social distancing. So I don't think we're going to get an answer anytime soon on that, so I...
That's fine, if we at least attempt again, it looks good on our ledger.
But I do think having the meeting be more in usual circumstances is a lot better for something that... This isn't an applicant that's a business, an applicant that's looking to move forward with something. This is the city's proposal, so I could support delaying this until we have the programming.
And I'll second the chairman's motion.
Was that Mr. Lowry?
I'll second your motion, the chairman's motion.
Thank you, all right. Discuss the motion, I saw our hand up from, who was it?
Chair Ketting, if I could, just briefly?
Yes.
I just want to address something that Commissioner Wigan said. I don't want the message to be that every attorney-sponsored comment letter will be received in a way that we, you know, reevaluate a decision that we would otherwise make. I do think that this is a unique circumstance, or maybe not so unique now with all of the different things coming down from the state level. But I also want to mention that SB 330 in particular comes with its own penalty per unit if it's, if there is a violation. So it's not a threat of litigation necessarily, there's a number of other concerns. But for me, the main concern is our ability as a body to effect a change or an amendment that is in contradiction with state law. So I just wanted to go on record to say that, but I'm also supportive of the motion on the floor.
If I hear no other discussion, we'll call for the motion? Call for the vote? Oh.
Oh. I lost my motion sensor lights there.
All right.
Just a question of this motion to continue, is the intent to wait until we get legal direction from the state as to if this complies or not?
Well, I certainly, my intent was to try to clear that matter up as soon as possible. If we can twist some horns up in Sacramento to do that, I'll yield to Simone. Is this even going to be possible, or are we just killing a month?
What I heard was just to get some direction from the state, if possible. I also heard to take some of the input from the commissioners this evening and possibly incorporate that. I don't have any specific direction as far as what changes that the commission would like. And to look at bringing this back, you know, probably at least 30 days to 30 to 45 days.
No real answer. All right, we have a motion, a second, let's call for the vote.
Let me just ask real quick, so do you want my changes or amendments? Or are we just going to come back and discuss those when we come back and discuss?
We'll come back. Now that we're more abreast of the detail in this. Staff? Let's call for the vote? Yeah, I have it. All right, roll call, please. Commissioner Kleinman?
Aye.
Commissioner Klostermeyer?
No.
Elmore? Commissioner Elmore? Did he vote?
That's a no, for me.
Was that a yes? That's a no? A no. Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wigan?
Yes.
And I made the motion, yes, there we go. 4-2. All right, thank you, long-winded item.
Moving on.
All right, we're going to item number three. Okay. I've got to get my notes in order. Okay, this is, do you want to take a break? Does anybody need a break, staff?
Let's take a break for a few minutes, that'd be great.
Your ice is melted. Five minutes.
All right.
Ew, I don't know, this took a while.
All right. Does somebody know how to find Eric? Well, we can start. We're live, all right. Planning Commission is back in session, we're on item number three. Amortization of non-conforming signs, PA 2019-184. This is code amendment number CA- This is code amendment number CA 2019-007 and local coastal program amendment LC 2019-005, citywide. Staff, would you please give us a little summary?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Jim Campbell, Deputy Community Development Director. I've got a brief presentation, so I'll be back in half a second sharing that. And then we go there. Did I miss it? Of course I did. Ah, come on. How do I, how did I screw this up?
Meanwhile, I was informed that this may be our last remote meeting. If the council meeting goes well Tuesday night next week, they're going to try to sit in spaced all around. If that works, then we'll do it at our next meeting.
All right, is it showing?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Apologize for that little delay there. I lost it here in the, in the software. So as indicated, this is a code amendment, an LCP amendment related to non-conforming signs. In October 2005, the city comprehensively updated the sign code. And at that point in time, the city did not allow roof signs, pole signs, some internally illuminated signs, and very large signs. And in doing so, they adopted a 15-year amortization period. Well, that's 14 and a half odd years ago. And so, you know, that 15-year amortization period is coming up in October of this year. So in October of 2020, the council initiated this amendment, suggesting at that time that we might consider extending the amortization period from three to five years. So real quick, roof signs not permitted. Translucent face signs, the top sign, the background glows and the letters are white. Bottom sign, background does not glow. And so the top sign is non-conforming. The bottom sign is conforming. Pole signs were no longer allowed in 2005. Pylon signs are allowed. And we see some of those signs out there today, not that specific one, of course. So the amendment itself is very, very simple. You see the code changes directly on the screen here, changing it from 15 years to 20 years. And that is the entire subject of this particular amendment. It wouldn't change what's non-conforming. It wouldn't change any of the sign standards. It wouldn't change what signs are required to be amortized. And they're listed right there, those five items that you saw. So as part of the outreach effort for this, aside from the council's consideration to initiate this back in October, in March, we send out comment letters to every non-conforming sign that we were aware of. And you see those numbers there. We did receive some feedback through that process, and a lot of the letters are in the packet and being received. We've also gone and done the public notice in the daily pilot. Obviously, we also direct mailed to business and property owners. And so we do have a fair amount of correspondence from folks who have signs. Most of them are suggesting that we should extend the sign permit. I'm sorry, the amortization period. Other suggestions are in there as well as to remove the amortization requirement altogether. Some of the comments also suggest that, you know, that some of the pole signs that are out there aren't really that bad. So before I get to questions, one other item I wanted to mention is we do have a procedure in the zoning code right now about declaring some, a sign, a heritage sign, would make it conforming. So that's one other option that we do have currently in our toolbox. But again, the proposal today is consistent with the council's directive to consider modifying the amortization period. It provides folks more time to comply. And I think the real reason we want to do that is back in 2005, we didn't provide any constructive notice to the property owners or to the business owners at that time. Obviously, they went through a public process with the city council to amend the code, but we didn't send out those notices. So the thought now is, you know, we have provided that notice now, today, for this process, and then provide additional time. And obviously, we started this process before COVID-19 hit. Obviously, businesses are struggling. And so that kind of also is another reason to kind of extend this because at this point, you know, having businesses invest more in their signage might not be the appropriate course of action. So staff recommends that we hold a public hearing. We hope that we can get a recommendation from the commission this evening to push this to the city council, simply to extend the amortization period. And staff is recommending five years. So with that, I'm available for any questions that the commission may have.
The chair wants to ask you a question. The staff report said you reached, there were 327 properties with non-conforming signs. I read that again in here. And you only heard back from 70 of them?
Give or take, yes. We're still receiving emails even later this afternoon. So, you know, obviously, we didn't get, not everyone chose to correspond with staff on this. But we did receive a fair amount of feedback, as you can see with the emails that you've been receiving that are in the packet as well.
Then, then since 2005, and since you had that list, an inventory of non-conforming and I'll call illegal sign changes, people come in to get a sign permit. And if they have a pole sign, do you go ahead and give them that? Or do you announce that to them, you can't put a sign in that pole? Or assign back up on a roof if you're replacing a tenant? How does that work? How has it worked since 2005?
Well, first of all, since 2005, we've been issuing permits consistent with the new codes. There hasn't been a new pole sign or a new roof sign permitted since 2005. And so when someone comes in to change a sign or modify a sign, we immediately have that dialogue with the property owner and the business owner about the status of the sign. You can actually change the face of the sign in a pole sign. The pole has to come down after the 15 years, but you can actually change the face of that. In fact, a specific example is the winery. I worked on that myself personally several years ago when it changed to the winery. We went through that process. I actually put statements on the plans alerting that property owner and that business owner to the status of that sign. But, so they still have to remove it by 2020, by October of 2020. And they got constructive notice when they did the face change of that pole sign. In fact, that property owner and that business owner actually has submitted a letter to you this evening suggesting that, you know, they would like to have more time or would probably have preferred not to have an amortization at all for that sign. And so, you know, obviously, there is different options the city could go through to address this issue. We could eliminate the amortization period. We could change the sign code itself to maybe allow these types of signs. And again, in keeping with the council's direction to, you know, look at the amortization time period, you know, staff is recommending an extension of time, very simple change. And what's not for us today is really reopening the sign code for changes to the development standards or elimination of the amortization period. Although the commission could forward those recommendations to council if they so chose.
See, your staff report, very simple. Do we as a commission support an extension of this? Is five years enough or more or less? And not debate somebody's sign on a roof, is it historical, is it not? Is the pole nice or not? That's not in our purview tonight. We're basically going to take a public hearing on this, but it's all about extension of time. Questions of staff, commissioners? Everybody's tired. All right, let's open this public hearing. Oh, Lauren, I didn't see your hand, Lauren. Sorry, there it is.
Commissioner Elmore also had his hand up. I'm just curious if there are other code provisions that pertain to signs. I know, at least I've brought up concerns in the past when we've had applications come before us for things relating to like tattoos and liquor and, you know, other things. And I've also pointed out some, some things throughout Corona del Mar Village that I felt were non-conforming or were troublesome for one reason or another. And it seemed like there were some other codes that code enforcement was able to use or had at their disposal. But maybe I'm, maybe I misunderstood. Could you just clarify that? And then I also wanted to ask if you could give us a little bit of an example using the crab cooker signage that we just talked about at the last meeting and kind of, you know, how that would have looked if this didn't exist?
Okay, well, we have a comprehensive set of regulations for signage. And in certain areas, we provide flexibility in design. In other areas, we really just don't. And that comes in mind, you know, pole signs are just simply not allowed. And so, you know, in 2004, 2005, when we updated the sign code, you know, the city, you know, council at that time and the community agreed upon a set of standards that they wanted to adhere to. You know, and over the years since then, we have lost roughly 25% of the signs that we identified in 2005 to today. And so over time, we bring it into compliance with the standards adopted in 2005. I think in certain code enforcement matters, you know, it may be that there's a sign that's illegal. Typically, those are banners or other temporary signs. Sometimes signs go up without permits, and we obviously have a lot of tools there for illegal signs. In many cases, we've got signs that have been out there for 30, 40 years, and they're just going to probably stay out there if they're non-conforming. So I'm not sure that answered your question fully, but, you know, I'm trying to just give you a kind of a flavor of how we handle signs. We do sign permits all the time. Oh, back to the crab cooker. The crab cooker sign really centered around that roof sign, which would no longer be allowed, that don't look up here sign. And we used a process there called the Heritage Sign Program. And the Heritage Sign Review Program was, is part of the zoning code. It's one of those tools that we have to take a sign that might not otherwise be allowed and then to allow it based on the criteria of that heritage sign. And so, you know, and we felt that that sign was a pretty good example of an iconic element on a building that obviously represents Newport Beach in a way that maybe not other commercial buildings and signs would. And so obviously, we felt that it was, was heritage value, and the commission did as well through its approval. Had we not gone through that procedure, then the crab cooker would be on our list to remove that roof sign. The other signage wouldn't have been amortized away. Hopefully, that addresses your questions.
Thank you, it does.
Commissioner Elmore.
Yeah, Jim, how did you determine five years is the appropriate amount of time?
Well, five years really, there's, there's no magic to the five years. I think, you know, we were looking for a longer period of time because a lot of times, this is the first time a property owner or business owner actually came to realize that there's a non-conforming sign and that it has to be removed at a certain time period. I think when the notices went out, I think people got a little confused thinking that we're just trying to remove these signs by October. And that's clearly not what we're trying to do. We're trying to extend it out further. And I, and I think the five years is a reasonable number, you know, based on the fact that a lot of these property owners and business owners just became aware of this here in 2020.
And Jim, just a reminder, city council gave us some guidelines too at the council meeting.
Yeah, that's very true. When we went to the city council to initiate this amendment, the council was speaking towards extending the time period. We heard three years, we heard five years. We didn't hear longer term periods when we visited the council. That doesn't mean that the commission couldn't have, went through a consensus, you know, come up with a different time period. But, you know, we felt five years was a reasonable approach at this point in time.
Based upon what has precipitated in the past, you, would more time be, I mean, instead of having this come back and everyone's kind of checked out right now, would more time be better for this?
I think it would be. You know, over time, we will see signs be removed as businesses come and go. You know, we'll see some signs removed. I think the roof signs and the pole signs that are out there today are probably going to still be there in five years. So that, that isn't necessarily going to change much unless it is so deteriorated, you know, based on just the elements that it has to be removed. And in that case, now that sign will have to come down and be replaced with something that's conforming. We have had a few pole signs come down and be replaced with pylon signs because, you know, a property owner wants to have a brand new sign, and the old sign just didn't go. So, you know, the longer we amortize these, the fewer signs that have to be forcibly eliminated at the end of the amortization period. Because over time, they just get replaced with new businesses.
Commissioner Wagon.
Yeah, so the staff report basically says 35% of the signs have been remedied through national, natural attrition. Tonight, what can we discuss beyond changing the date? Can we remove the, eliminate the amortization process tonight? Or is it, or can we only discuss extending out time?
Well, I think you can actually discuss both. Again, the council was looking toward extending the amortization period, not to change the sign regulations on what's allowed and what's not allowed, and maybe not to change whether they're amortized at all or not, just that. That, that being said, I think that through this process, you could offer up additional suggestions. And then, and obviously, eliminating the amortization period is one way to do it. There are other changes. And I think, I think that's within the Plenary Commission's purview to offer up those suggestions.
Yeah, I would have liked to have seen some more examples of what we're seeing. The last staff report had some great examples and pictures, but these ones here are Austin, Texas, Massachusetts, Wisconsin. I know what you're trying to do, but I'd like to have seen some examples of what we're talking about. But we received a ton of feedback from a lot of businesses. And this was night and day compared to the last item. Every single business wrote us saying, don't, don't, we need to either end this practice or we need to give us more time than just five years. These guys are going to be hurting very, very soon with COVID. The business world is turned upside down right now. And I'm looking forward to giving these guys more than five years. I'd be in favor of eliminating this process altogether. I think signs provide some character. We're not Irvine, we're Newport Beach. So some of these signs are up in areas that are old Newport. And we're not, we're not talking about Irvine company areas that are already, you know, conformed. We're talking about a fairly small number of signs with businesses that likely have been in this community for a long time. And we want to keep those businesses here for a long time. So I'd like the commission to really keep that in mind as we discuss this moving forward. But we've got a lot of struggles on our, on our horizon here, and we got to keep these businesses safe in here in Newport Beach.
Yeah. Commissioner Wagon, the presentation does have a lot of photographs. I just haven't got to those yet. I wasn't sure if you wanted to see them. But I can show you examples of signs that are related to the letters that you did receive.
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, I know we're under time. We've been doing this for a while, so I'm happy to see it. But if other commissioners get it, I don't, we don't have to see it.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? All right, public? We're going to open the public hearing. We start with the community room, and then we're going to call in. Call in is 270-8165. Area code 949, all right. Staff, could we have any comments from the community room? Public hearing is open, by the way. I see one in there.
Hello, my name is Craig Batley, and I happen to have a property that has this 50-year-old pole sign on it. And as was just announced here by some of the commissioners, some of the awareness of these amortization signs have just become, many business owners just became aware of this. And what I think is kind of ironic in a way, the signs that were put up that you wanted to amortize weren't conforming when they were put up. The sign ordinance was changed, and now they're non-conforming. So we're talking about taking signs that were legal at one time, and now they're not. And I think a five-year extension really doesn't really address the real issue. The real issue is there's a lot of signs that have been up for a number of years, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, even longer. An example is, it was brought up on the winery sign. That guy spent $25,000 on that pole sign. It was legal when, when he went ahead and did that. And so along Mariners Mile and on the peninsula, there's some of these signs. And I think that the commission should just probably eliminate the whole amortization thing altogether. Those that were non-conforming according to the new sign ordinance should be grandfathered in. in. And as you point out, there'll be an attrition over the period of time. And, you know, I've never heard one complaint on my sign. I've never heard any public comment complain about these signs, not one. And this was an internal staff report. It wasn't widely spread out. I was never contacted 15 years ago, and I don't think there was hardly any input from any sign orders at that time. So I recommend that we just eliminate the whole amortization altogether. And if you can't do that, go 10 or 15 years out.
Well, what's the name on your sign, sir?
Burt White Realty. Been there for 52 years.
Which one? Because there are several of them on the peninsula.
There's one, and it is hard to miss. It's a 2901.
We have a second speaker from the community room.
Hi, I'm Bob Carson. I own the property at 3050 3040 Pacific Coast Highway. Currently, there's a Baja Fresh is the tenant in there, and the sign was, pole sign was put up before the ordinance, and so I'm hoping that it'll be looked at and grandfathered in.
Thank you. Yes, could I have your name, please?
This is Jim Mosher. I support the idea of eliminating the amortization program. I really do not understand what the original motivation was for, I understand the motivation for wanting new signs to be new. I don't understand the motivation in 2005 for wanting to eliminate the signs that were part of the heritage of the city. It seems to me, having an eclectic mix of old signs that went with the old buildings when they were built as part of the funky character of a beach city. And I don't understand what was done, so I support eliminating the program. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll take calls coming in now at 949-270-8165. There it is.
Hello?
Greetings. Please state your name.
This is Patricia Langsam. I live near Bay Island on the Bellbola Peninsula. I would like to address the travesty of the type of buildings that are presently being constructed in this neighborhood, these McMansions. I would hope that the committee would find it in their hearts to discontinue approving such construction and keeping Newport Beach in the charm that it's always been known for. To coin a phrase, enough is enough, and I think at this point, we should stop giving them the approval for this type of construction.
Thank you for your comments. We're now discussing the sign amortization or removals. So you have any thoughts on that in your last 40 seconds?
No, I'm just concerned about the large homes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller number two.
Good evening. Wallace Rodecker, 2823 East Coast Highway. I have one of your nonconforming signs. I wrote a letter. I don't know if you had a chance to review it. I want to echo Mr. Wayland's remarks about the damage that the loss of my sign would do to our business, the timing of this thing coming up. And also, I was unaware of it until I received and just happened to read that little blue card in the mail. The postcard was kind of anonymous looking, and fortunately, I did get a chance to see that. Otherwise, I wouldn't have known about it or this meeting tonight. I would encourage the council to get rid of the measure altogether and just let signs go the wayside through attrition, as apparently a third of them already have. To enforce this now will be very damaging to my business and businesses like it, and so I hope you'll give that some consideration.
Thank you for the call. Caller number three.
Good evening. Hello, could I have your name? 9:30. Where are you? All right, let's move on. Do we have a fourth caller? Now, they'll both talk to each other. Hello?
Yes, this is J.C. Cloud, the owner of the winery restaurant, 3131 West Coast Highway.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, they told me I was caller number four. This is J.C. Cloud, the owner of the winery restaurant, 3131 West Coast Highway.
Yes, thank you. We heard you.
Yep. Okay, great. Jim, thanks. Jim, thanks for the, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. You're live.
Okay. Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. They said I was number four, so I thought someone was ahead of me.
Nope, you're live, number four. You're running out of time, though.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and members of the planning commission, thanks for, thanks for taking my call. After three hours of listening to the prior conversations, I appreciate the opportunity. And I just want to applaud Mr. Wagen for his initial comments. And I just couldn't say that there's a more inopportune time for us during this current, you know, economic pandemic that we're going through to have to do any type of renovations. The one gentleman that spoke prior to me had mentioned I spent a significant amount of money on our sign, and I love the fact that Newport Beach is unique and different, and it's not a bunch of cookie cutter homes, and I love the...
Hello?
Yeah, okay. So listen, I would like to propose to eliminate the amortization altogether, and I just appreciate the opportunity to be heard. Thank you all, and I hope that you'll take the current business economy into consideration that this is just a very inopportune time, and it should be eliminated altogether. Thank you all very much for this opportunity.
Thank you for calling in. We have caller number five coming in. Hello there, caller five we're looking for. Hello?
Yeah, I'm hearing another guy speak on the TV. Should I go ahead?
No, turn the TV off, please.
Okay, I'm walking away. My name is Art Pease, property 41032th Street, Newport, across the street from the old City Hall. I wrote a letter. I've been listening to council's input, and I think from what I'm hearing, the consensus is to eliminate the amortization program altogether. My opinion is that these sign issues can be rectified between property owners and business owners to upgrade over attrition as things develop. And this cooker, cookie cutter type of program, which the 2005 sign ordinance was to begin with, is run its life. It has no place in the current environment that we're in right now, and I would oppose, have you oppose any type of enforcement of the sign ordinance going forward. Let things take their natural course. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in. All right. We're through with the phone in. So, public hearing is now closed. All right. Let's take commissioners' comments among ourselves or with staff. Let me see, somebody raise a hand. I see Sarah, please.
Yeah, Commissioner Wagen, I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate many of the public comments that came in this evening. I would also be supportive of either extending this or completely eliminating this amortization period altogether. I don't think it's fair to require current business owners that are, that put signs in when they were conforming to need to go back and change those signs currently. I do think that over time, attrition will solve this problem.
All right. Mr. Wagen.
Yeah, staff, can you help walk us through, I guess, the elimination of the amortization of this? Since your recommendation was five years, I just, you know, want to see what, I guess, do we just simply make a motion to eliminate the amortization? Or is there something I need to do more worded to move forward with that, since it really wasn't something that was recommended on staff's end?
Well?
Commissioner Wagen, actually, it's a fairly simple change to the code, actually. There's an entire section, 2042140, it deals with nonconforming sign abatement. And it might be just as simple as to eliminate that. So if that's the motion or consensus, the commission to put that forward as a recommendation to council, it's fairly easy to accomplish and as well as to understand, so.
I'll make that motion, but the chair, he has the prerogative to ask other commissioners, but that would be my movement forward.
That's a little premature.
Okay.
Jim, this brings up a confusing question. Is this, the staff's report does not address getting rid of it in total. Council, 2010, I mean, excuse me, 2005, gave 15 years, and now, is this a staff-generated item or did it come down from council for nonconforming signs?
You know, initially, I think staff saw this as being an issue that needed to be addressed, and we went to the city council to seek some input on how we might address this question. And out of the study session and then initiation of the amendment, we got the feedback to extend the amortization period. I think eliminating the amortization period is a different form of the same kind of thing, but it is a little different than what the council was thinking. My thought is, is, you know, if the commission feels that eliminating the amortization entirely is appropriate, I think it's appropriate for you to make that recommendation to the city council.
How would it work?
Well, you know, my thought is, is that you could offer a recommendation to extend or eliminate the amortization period. And, you know, if five years is appropriate or some other time period, you know, that could be part of the recommendation, then the council would have the latitude to, you know, take that recommendation, do, you know, extend it three years, or extend it five years, or extend it seven years, whatever the council would choose to do. But if they also chose to eliminate it, you know, then your voice is there to support that action, and I think that's perfectly appropriate. You can make that in the form of a, of the motion, and we can modify the resolution. You know, it might take a little more surgery there on the resolution, but I think that it's a pretty straightforward motion that I think staff can easily amend the resolution and have you look at that at the next meeting.
So if that was the case, and the council agreed to that, eliminating it, does that do away with code enforcement on signs? So if anybody can do anything they want, or am I misreading that?
It wouldn't change any code enforcement posture that we would have. Obviously, we wouldn't be permitting any of the signs that would otherwise be subject to amortization today because they're not allowed. So over time, you know, signs would come into more compliance. You know, as a sign deteriorates and is, you know, beyond repair, then it gets removed or replaced with something conforming. So I think natural attrition will get us closer to compliance. You know, I think these pole signs are very much coveted by the, by the commercial community, and I expect them, we're going to do everything they possibly can do to maintain them and keep them. And I think that's fine. I don't think the council gave us the latitude to really start looking at the sign code itself, but I think whether we amortize it and how long, I think that's, you know, two sides to the same coin, but I think it's well within the commission's purview to make either or both those recommendations, extend, or can consider eliminating the amortization.
So if there was a roof-mounted sign that is not legal, and a tenant moved out, new tenant came in, would the city approve a new sign in a nonconforming sign location on a roof? Or would they say, "Got to come up, you got to put a fascia sign"?
Mr. Chair, I think you indicated that the sign was illegal, and so if we have an illegal sign, that we have the enforcement capabilities of the municipal code to remove an illegal sign regardless of how it got there or its design.
Make that a nonconforming sign. I misspoke.
We have a legal nonconforming sign, yes. So we can actually do face changes on nonconforming signs, assuming the sign face conforms to the translucent requirements. And we can do that now, even if it is subject to amortization, and we continue to do so if it's not. So, you know, obviously, we have those capabilities. And so, you know, obviously, any permits that we issue are going to be performance with, with the code as ineffective at the time.
Very good. Commissioners, other comments? Lauren had one? Thank you, I see it now.
Yeah, I know it's late, sorry. I too am in agreement with Commissioner Wagen about this certainly not being the right time to be burdening business owners, but I'm just not even really entirely sure what we're talking about. Could you just flip through just quickly some of the signs around town that you sent notices to?
Sure. Hang on one moment, I'll share my presentation again.
I mean, actual signs of...
Yes, yes. Here, here we go. This is a nonconforming pole sign, West Coast Highway. This is a nonconforming sign as well, and the reason it's nonconforming is because the background, the blue background you see actually glows. The code does not allow, the letters can be translucent, but the background cannot. So that, this sign was out there 15 years ago as well. This is a nonconforming, Mr. Batley, I'm sorry, Russ Fluter sent you a letter. This is a nonconforming market sign, but it's also got a translucent background. Roof sign, this is in East Coast Highway here, very near City Hall. This is a nonconforming sign again with the translucent background, that white background glows. This is also a translucent background, nonconforming sign. It's in Mariners Mile. You did receive some comment letters on that one. Here's a couple others. The A Restaurant sign, it's the pole sign and a roof sign. You've got two roof, well, you actually got three roof signs. You've got the market sign here, pole sign, the A on the roof, and then this is another image of a second pole sign, if I'm not mistaken. So we've got a couple of nonconformities here. You know, maybe this might, maybe this site might warrant the heritage sign review. I honestly don't know. We have a couple of the pole signs in West Newport, Spaghetti Bender, the Outpost Liquor Store. Both of these are nonconforming because of pole signs. They're also nonconforming because of the translucent background that glows. Nonconforming roof sign, again, for the translucent background and the roof sign. And then the winery sign that we spoke about earlier, and this is the sign that I, we definitely put them on notice when this face was changed out, when it changed over to the winery several years ago. We have a couple of roof signs in Corona Del Mar, and then this one with the white background again does glow, and it's nonconforming in two aspects. And then we have a couple of additional signs, one West Newport, the Smoke Shop Psychic Tattoo. These are, it's a nonconforming pole sign, but also, again, the translucent backgrounds. The one, and we have this wall sign here that also is nonconforming because of the translucent backgrounds. Now, the Channel Inn sign that you see over here at 6000 West Coast Highway is an interesting one. one, that was a pole sign several years ago and then a car hit it. And then the sign that replaced it came back as what we call a pylon sign, so this is a conforming sign. And that's it, that's all the signs I've got for you tonight.
Okay, just quickly, is there a fee associated with applying for the Heritage Sign designation?
Yes, there is. It covers a staff administrative time, I don't think it's fairly large, but it's probably, and I don't know what it is off the top of my head, we've only done it once and that was for the crab cooker and we've had this process for 15 years. So I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the actual fee, but it's probably somewhere around $2,000.
Okay, thank you.
I see Mr. Elmore's hand up, Commissioner?
Yeah, quick question, if this sign amortization period was, if this wasn't in front of us today and this sign amortization period came to an end, how would the city handle all, addressing all of these non-conforming signs?
Well, we would have to go into an enforcement mode where we would again engage the property owners and the business owners and letting them know, okay, if the amortization period is run out, now you need to remove the sign. And that might be met with, you know, probably people would want to litigate that whole scenario and we would have to go into an enforcement mode and take, use our administrative procedures for fining and/or legal actions to have them removed. And so, you know, that's, that's where that might go and, you know, Staff doesn't relish doing that, especially at this point in time. Again, we're recommending an extensions, this is not the right time to be doing any of this, granted, but enforcement might, would be time-consuming, staff-intensive and might involve litigation.
Got it, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Wagen.
Can we move forward with the motion now, Mr. Chair? I think Mr. Campbell's presentation really nailed it and sealed the deal. Every single one of those signs have character, they represent Newport Beach and we need to keep those as long as possible and let's just get rid of the amortization and let these business owners just be that, business owners and worry about other things than a sign.
All right, let's go, Mr. Law, Lee, did you have a comment?
No, but I'd love to second Eric's motion.
I didn't hear the motion.
I said, the one you said, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'll make the motion on just getting rid of the amortization, make recommendation to Council to get rid of that amortization period.
And I'll second that.
All right. Motion second, discussion, any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, let me, if I may?
I have Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Elmore, you had your hand up briefly? No, he didn't, okay, he was just waving.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask the Yolanda Summerhill, do we need to bring back the resolution or do we think we can go ahead and just amend this current one this evening?
The Commission recommendation would be to approve with a modification, is that correct? And so it would be approval with the modification, so that would suffice?
All right, no more discussion, let's vote on the motion, please. Roll call. Let me get it out, they have me going in a specific order, Commissioner Kleinman.
Aye.
Commissioner Klostermeyer.
Aye.
Commissioner Elmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry.
Yes.
Commissioner Wigan?
Aye.
And aye, motion passed unanimously. All right, go to, new business, item number four. By the way, under new business, for those listening and watching, this is not a public hearing item, but you can comment on it. All right, city policy, City Council Policy, K3 Amendment to SEQA Procedures Regarding SB 743 Vehicles' Miles Traveled Policy Procedures. All right, citywide, while we, Staff sets up to make this long presentation, callers can use 949-270-8165. Staff? Presentation? Is Tony giving us one from another room? Okay. Is Tony in the building? You want to jump ahead to?
Just a moment.
Oh, here we are, there you go.
We're almost there.
Oh.
Okay, are we all set?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so vehicle miles traveled, let's see if we can step through this fairly quickly and it's a little bit of a dry topic, but I'll give it a go. I'm not sure if Mr. Petros is called in, but I think he was going to try to. This is a process that the Senate Bill 743 was passed initially in 2013. And the basic part of that Senate bill was that they wanted to shift the analysis from motorist delay to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and that was the goal during SEQA analysis for transportation. And what it led to was the Office of Planning and Research, they did a document and they recommended that vehicle miles traveled becomes the new metric for transportation analysis as part of SEQA documents and that would replace level of service, which is, has been the standard for many years. And so in December 2018, the final guidelines were adopted by OPR, the Office of Planning and Research, and that has become a document that a lot of cities and jurisdictions are looking at. So quickly, vehicle miles traveled and the difference between level of service. Vehicle miles traveled is basically what the daily trips are from a project multiplied by what would be the estimated number of miles that that trip would take to get to their destination. In comparison to level of service, which is what we do now and most jurisdictions do to look at impacts, that essentially is a measurement of the traffic volume on the road divided by what the capacity of the roadway is, which generally is the number of lanes on the road. So in the past, when there's been impacts from a transportation project, the improvement has been usually to improve the capacity or add lanes to the roadway. The state wanted to get away from, from that process and that's the direction we've headed into. So the technical advisory that I mentioned, this was put out by the Office of Planning and Research, and it pretty much lays out what the state recommends in terms of how a VMT analysis should be done, what the thresholds would be for impacts for projects and some general discussion on mitigation measures. And the important part of this is that this technical advisory, when it's put out, it's very clear that the agencies, cities and other agencies in the state, you can either choose to use the recommendations in that report or you can develop your own thresholds, your own local thresholds, but it has to be supported by substantial evidence. So there has to be a lot of background data and technical data if you want to vary away from what's in this advisory. So basically, the different processes, and I'm going to be jumping around, I hope I'm not going to do this too badly, but the VMT screening review, anytime a project comes in, the first thing you want to do is screen that project. So any non-SEQA exempt projects would have to be initially screened and we'll get into what those screening criteria are in a little bit here. But then what you would do is if the screening thresholds were not met, you'd do a full detail, a full VMT analysis. Basically though, by doing the VMT analysis as a project comes in, we're not going to stop doing level of service analysis. We're going to continue to do those because basically our general plan lays out that we've got standards, we've got policies in the city general plan that we need to continue meeting and so we need to continue doing a level of service analysis per the traffic phasing ordinance. As we move forward, the difference being that with a SEQA document like an EIR, that level of service analysis would not be what would be the division of what the impacts would be. So here's what the three primary steps are for a VMT analysis, you have your screening criteria, which I'll get to in just a second. You've got thresholds, which would then define if the project has an impact or not, and then you've got mitigation. So the different type of trip types and the different metrics, and this is what it comes down to, home-based work trips are the primary subject. So these are trips tied to residential, office and retail land uses, those are the three primary land uses that VMT looks at because they are all looked into as the greatest influence on the large whole vehicle miles traveled in the area. Residential uses then are called VMT per capita, so picture, it's all based back on your home. You're leaving your home, you're going to work, or you're leaving your home, you're going to the store, that's all part of a home-based work trip. An office trip, which is then counted as VMT per employee, that's more tied to the office itself. So let's say you've driven from home, you've gotten to the office and then at work, at lunchtime at work, you leave your office at lunch to go get something, you come back. That's an office-related trip, that's tied into a VMT per employee count. And then the retail uses are looked at as a whole VMT that's attributable to the project, not necessarily tied to a per person or per employee. So this is that screening criteria, so a project comes in, first thing you're going to do when they submit, you're going to look at all of these different aspects that can be reviewed for screening. And if any of these six items are met, then it's considered less than significant and then that's the extent of your VMT analysis, you've determined the project has the less significant impact and you document that and on you go. So the criteria is a high-quality transit district, is it within a half mile of a major stop? Is it near a line, a bus line that has service intervals less than 15 minutes? VMT maps, I'll show you some maps here in a second, those are defining areas that already have what are considered to be low vehicle miles traveled. So they can be in different parts of the city and based on our traffic model, which we use to develop these maps, we can determine what areas in the city have what are considered low vehicle miles traveled compared to a county average. If the project area falls within that map zone, then it can be screened out. Local serving retail, less than 50,000 square feet, that's determined to be a project that can be less than significant. Again, what the state is looking for is trying to shorten those trips, trying to reduce the mileage. If you're, you've got a project that you're, it's a locally serving project, then they consider that less significant. The affordable housing part is something that I put to be determined because the high percentage is the key here and the state right now, OPR, is looking at that high percentage as 100% affordable housing. And I'm not sure that that is exactly the number we're looking at, so I know that community development is going to be looking at that number and determining what that, that correct percentage should be. Projects with 300 or less net daily trips, that would be a less significant impact and that's consistent with our traffic phasing ordinance in that if it's a lower-sized project, less than 300 trips, less than significant impact and you can move on. And then the last one being institutional or government or public uses, those can all be screened out. So this is a map that would show you what a high-quality transit area is and what we're defining at least right now on the maps. That green area shown throughout is within a high-quality transit area. So if a project were to come in within that area, you can then say it meets the screen and it's got a less than significant impact. So probably the one right now that jumps out the most is Newport Center. Any project that comes in within the Newport Center area would be screened out, no VMT, no detailed VMT analysis necessary. The top, at the top, sort of the, half of the airport area would be screened out based on this because it's within a half a mile of that bus line that's got the intervals of 15 minutes or less. So you've got portions of the city here that can meet that high-quality transit screening. Now, these are the VMT maps and this has been developed through our transportation model. The areas in green are considered to be low VMT areas in comparison to the county average. So if a project came in, they're within that green area, they can meet the screening, they don't need to do a detailed VMT analysis. The yellow ones, they would need to be calculated, we'd have to do a VMT analysis. The red ones have a very high VMT at this point in time. And this is for per capita and this is for residential. The VMT per employee, and now this is based on office or per employee uses, you can see that basically everything in the city is red right now based on our model, which means that most of the vehicle miles traveled for the people that live in the city or people coming into the city is above the county average. So the significant thresholds, and this is once, now you've jumped past the screening, if a project does not meet any of those screening criteria, now you have to get into doing a VMT analysis. What the first part is, is that the county has an average and their average, what their average VMT per capita is for residential and their average per employee. So what that means is, let's say, any of us, per person, the county averages, we're going to drive a total of 17.9 miles a day. That's our, that's what the county is saying, is you get in your car and through all the different trips you make that day, it's going to add up to 17.9 miles. For the per employee, the office number is essentially the per capita number. You're leaving your house, you're going to the store, you're going to work, you're taking your kid to school, whatever you're doing, then add on top of that, if you're going to the office and now you're making that trip from the office to go to the post office or from the office to go to lunch, add that on top. So now you've got a higher number and now you're looking at 24.1 vehicle miles traveled per employee for that type of project. So now the OPR Technical Advisory, that document that I showed earlier, that provides different types of thresholds for significance in there. And most agencies in the state right now, including ourselves, are basically going with OPR's goal of trying to reduce the vehicle miles traveled from what is the regional average, in this case for us, the county average, reducing that vehicle miles traveled as part of the goal by 15%. So we're saying, when a project comes in, if the county average is 17.9 for a residential project, any new residential project that comes in now, the threshold's going to be minus 15% or 15.2. And the same with an office, an employee-based land use, the threshold's going to be 20.5. So a project comes in, the calculations are done either manually or generally for the most part with the traffic model, those numbers are calculated, if they come out above 15.2 for a cap for residential or above 20.5 for an employee, they are above the thresholds and there's an impact. So the step-by-step process for doing this is the application comes in like we would get for any project. the application comes in like we would get for any project. The very first thing we would do is we would screen, we'd look at the screening criteria. Does it meet any of those six items on the criteria? If it does, then less than significant, move on. Document that it's less than significant and move on. If the project does not meet that criteria, then that's when we get into that detailed analysis. For projects that are above 300, you remember one of the screening was 300 or less. But if you fall into that 300 to 1,000 range, but there's only one land use. So let's say it comes in and it's only residential, or it comes in and it's only an office use, or similar to an office employee-based use. You can calculate it manually. You can calculate out your VMT manually. You don't need to run the traffic model to come up with that number. But I would say for most projects that we're going to see, because we're seeing mostly a lot of mixed-use projects coming in or larger projects, we will be using the traffic model to calculate what that vehicle miles traveled number is. And then again, if the VMT that's calculated per capita for residential, per employee, or total VMT for a retail project exceeds those thresholds, those 15.2, the 20 vehicle miles traveled on the employee, then you have a significant impact, and then you're required to provide mitigation. And this is in the document that we prepared, that I worked with LSA in the preparation of the manual that is a backup to this. It starts at the top with the screening criteria, yes or no. If it's yes, you meet one of them, there you go. If no, you work your way down. What kind of project is it, residential, office, retail, other, other being mixed use? And then what are the thresholds, which I mentioned before? And then you model the project, you run it through the traffic model, it kicks out the number, what's the VMT? Is it greater than or less than the threshold? And then you work your way down to mitigation measures. So mitigation measures. So there's a large number of mitigation measures that you can come up with for any project to address impacts and VMT impacts. If you look at the report, there's a number of pages there. There's literally dozens and dozens of types of mitigation, but most of them revolve around improving access to transit or doing bike and pedestrian-type improvements, or ride-sharing improvements, or telework options onsite, onsite showers and lockers, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the types of mitigation measures that a project can apply to try and reduce their impact back to less than significant. But the issue here is that a lot of these mitigation improvements and these suggestions that the state are putting out, they can be a little bit difficult to quantify because the range of reduction for the different uses on the VMT can vary widely. You can get anything from a 1% reduction to a 15% reduction. There's such a variation there that getting into the mitigation is something that would have to be a lot of assumptions made and determinations made as to how much mitigation actually counts towards the reducing of the VMT. Looking ahead in the future, I think there's a lot of jurisdictions and throughout the state that are saying, perhaps the way to do it then is just to have an impact fee, similar to what we do now, charging an impact fee for more regional improvements. And that could be something coming in the future. Transportation projects, and there also has to be VMT analysis for transportation projects. So that means all the types of projects that we do here at the city, CIP projects, we would have to at least do that screening for a project. But most of the projects that we do are maintenance-level-type projects or repaving a roadway, or striping a bike lane, or something of that nature. And those would all be screened out. You wouldn't need to do a detailed analysis because those are all improvement projects. Whereas the main thing that they're looking at here for VMT is are you adding capacity to the roadway? Are you adding another traveling? Because if you are, then you need to do an analysis because they're not seeing adding a capacity, adding a lane as a positive. They're saying, well, then that just defeats what we're trying to do here. We're trying to reduce vehicle miles traveled, and you're making it easier for people to drive their car. And they're saying, no, you need to get away from that. Addition of through lanes, addition of travel lanes. So you need to do an analysis for that. And coast highway projects, projects on state roads, Caltrans is coming up with their own VMT methodology. So anytime we look at a project that's going to happen on coast highway, we would have to work with Caltrans, but they would have their own methodology. And currently, they're finishing the preparation of their methodology at the same time. So what we're bringing to you tonight is essentially we're proposing an amendment to the existing council policy K3. And K3 is the implementation procedures for SEQUA. We're proposing that we take this VMT process and the framework for completing it and just add it on to the end of K3. So it becomes another part of the SEQUA analysis process. And so that's what the resolution we're bringing tonight is to recommend the amendment to K3 to add the framework for doing the analysis. And so if you have any questions.
Well, how about that?
Tried to make it quick and short, given the time.
In my days of development, we lived and died by the level of service. And you're saying now, you're still going to require it if it conflicts with a VMT?
No, we're saying that we're going to require LOS because our general plan requires us to do a level of service analysis because we've got standards and policies within our general plan right now for what a level of service should be for an intersection. But the difference here is that for SEQUA documents, we would have to do the analysis per vehicle miles traveled. But we will continue to do a level of service analysis based on our general plan.
Which trumps which? Vehicle miles traveled?
Vehicle miles traveled, again, is to address the SEQUA requirements, and our level of service is a separate analysis that we do for our general plan.
And what are your thoughts on those six items? If you meet one of those six criterias, you're kicked down the road, and you're moving along.
If you meet one of those six criteria, you don't need to do that detailed analysis. You don't need to run the model, you don't need to calculate the VMT. You're less than significant, and you can move on.
What's your theory on this? Do you like this?
It's a whole new way of doing things. I know that Tony Petros, and I can see he's joined us here, and Tony's been working on this for many, many years with the state and with the Office of Planning and Research and coming up with these criteria. But there's been a lot of contention with traffic engineers and transportation planners throughout the state. But this is the mandate because the goal is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and their approach is to reduce vehicle miles traveled is the way to address that.
All right, those are my commissioners' comments. Here's Eric Wagen.
Councilman Petros, thanks for joining us. Can you just go into the controversy a little bit on VMT? You've been studying this for a long time. You know, I work for a legislator, and my former boss is an OCTA board member. So I remember a little bit about the discussion. But I'm just trying to grasp the... And this is probably something that we don't need to go too deep on, but just fill us in a little bit on the controversy related to some of the aspects of it.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Wagen, for the kind introduction and the question. Briefly, the controversy started primarily in the larger urban areas of the state where using level of service as a metric for SEQUA proved to be really difficult. In San Francisco, if you have congestion, that's just a day in the life. Yet through a SEQUA document in San Francisco, if you disclose congestion, then you would be required to offset or mitigate that. And that would look like adding a turn lane or adding a through lane down a roadway. There's no right-of-way in urban cores in California to do that. Add to that the fact that our state has decided that it will become the example for the United States and really internationally for climate change policy. And the primary way to address climate change is through the sequestration of greenhouse gas emissions. The primary contributor to those greenhouse gas emissions happens to be the transportation sector. And if we can, so the theory goes, stop people from driving their cars or limit the length they go and the trips they take, greenhouse gas emissions will be reduced, and we will, in fact, as the theory goes, reduce the strain on our climate. So the legislature put into effect this bill, SB 743, to do just that. The tension is, in the bill, it was originally intended to be started in the urban areas. However, pressure in Sacramento made it so that it was rolled out across the state. And what may work in an urban core does not work in the Central Valley, creates a whole host of problems in the Coachella Valley, and really picks winners and losers in a suburban area or a growing suburban urban area like Orange County. So the tension becomes the desire for economic growth and development, the satisfaction of our housing. You had a very, very long agenda item on housing and the zoning code. Using that as our policy initiative, or do we slow that and do that by virtue of this new SEQUA metric? Or pick winners and losers and say there shall be no development in the inland empire, for example? We want it all in Los Angeles in the urban core. That's more of the philosophical policy. I will say this, Tony did a very fine job making a brief presentation. I would just let you know this, and I don't mean to be flit. Please don't take it as such. You have very little discretion tonight. If the city does not adopt this set of guidance, which we have relaxed a number of the screening criteria, we have set you up for greater flexibility in many other places by virtue of the substantial evidence that's been included. If you, just as a matter of principle, say we don't buy into this, it doesn't matter. Come July 1st, 2020, the state has mandated you will do this. And so it really is an action on behalf of the city to create a body of evidence to allow some level of flexibility. The way that we have operated with staff and with the city is to say this. There will be cases filed on this issue, and they're going to come very, very soon. Our role was to keep the city protected, to manage the risk such that for the next three to five years, if you could get through the development process and let the fur fly above you, then we will probably have precedent legal actions that might better define for us a pathway that might be more in line with the vision of Newport Beach and allow us a little more greater flexibility. So that's where we are today, and I'm sorry for being long-winded.
No, that's perfect. Thank you, Councilman. And thank you, Tony, for putting this together. It's a lot of hard work and doing it after all of what we've done tonight.
Thank you very much for that. Let's go to...
And again, I was hoping that we're taking kind of a complicated issue, and I was really trying to squeeze it down to a short presentation. But again, that document, that technical document that OPR put out that has the recommended way to do this and the thresholds and the screening criteria and such, we stayed to that pretty closely. We really didn't go away from it too much. And I think Tony touched on it a little bit. It's because nobody really wants to stick their neck out on this. Nobody, you know, we're going to follow the process. We're going to start doing these VMT analyses. We're going to see what the results are. And then we're going to sit back and say, oh, okay, this is what these types of projects show as far as the results of the analysis. And we're all in the same boat here, all the jurisdictions throughout the state. We're going to have to go through this, see how the process plays out, and then decide what is appropriate for our city. But for now, to start, I think it's best, it's most prudent, to stay with, generally, to stay with what the state recommendations are, which is what we've done. And I think the one thing that we varied on was the screening criteria where we changed the trips. And the trip level that the state had put out for a threshold was 110 trips a day, which is pretty low. We thought we'd bring that up to 300, make it consistent with our traffic phasing ordinance. So outside of that, we pretty much stayed to the state recommendations, which I think sets us up fairly well if there is future litigation coming through on this.
Very good. Since it's almost 10:30, I'd like to get comments from the... Anybody in the community room? There is someone. Jim, is that you?
Yes. I would like to... I didn't get a chance to comment on this in writing. In reading the staff report, my impression was there's a great deal of policy being presented here for the planning commission to review. We've heard that it's close to something that we have to do, but the staff report didn't actually very clearly explain what it is that's constraining us and exactly how much wiggle room we have and on which things we have wiggled and how far we have wiggled. So I'm a little concerned that you're reviewing it without knowing what alternatives might be possible to it. And the actual document itself has numerous problems in it in a few pages that I've read. I can... You received some written comments from Mr. David Tanner. If I look at the very beginning of the proposed policy, which is on handwritten page 13, it really mischaracterizes SB 743. It didn't actually say we have to use vehicle miles traveled. It told the OPR to come up with new standards, which might be based on those. Second paragraph says that the Governor's Office of Planning and Research codified the bill in Public Resources Code. They didn't do that, they didn't have the power to do that. The legislature put it in the Public Resource Code. They produced the guidelines. The next page over, I'm not sure if it's one of the intentional wigglings or just a misprint, but at the top of page 14, it is "through the screening process eliminating a project located within one-half mile of a transit priority area." If you look at the next paragraph, "The transit priority area is the one-half mile area around a major transit stop, which is the bus stop up the street here." So I don't know if this means a half mile beyond the half mile. In other words, one mile, or if that's just a misprint. It refers to Figure 1, which it says is showing transit priority areas. It's actually showing the half-mile radius around the bus corridors. And then the Figure 2, it refers to the areas with low per capita vehicle miles traveled. That's on handwritten page 44. Shows some of the areas of the city as green, but the map doesn't color all of the city. It's missing West Santa Ana Heights, it's missing Newport Terrace. So we don't know what color those are, and numerous other problems with this. So I think it really needs some more work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Seeing nobody else will take phone calls, if anybody's still with us. No calls. All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing and basically focus with the planning commission. Anybody have further questions of staff or consultants? If not, it looks like we're going down this road. Jim's comments are quite interesting. Tony, briefly, do you want to try to conclude something out of that?
Yes, I will.
All right.
Or whichever, Tony. And I believe Commissioner Kleiman's hand is up.
All right. Lauren?
Sure, thanks. To your earlier question or comment, Chair Ketting, I think as Councilman Petros already touched on, we don't have a choice here, but we probably can and will have some conflict in other places in our other governing documents. So my question is have those all been gone through and potential conflicts been looked at? And also, is this council policy the best place to incorporate these guidelines? Is that the only place that the city documents address SEQA? If it is the appropriate place, do we really need to incorporate the entire framework? Or are we really incorporating by reference the implementation guide, which is a much more thorough accounting of everything that we're talking about here? It just seems duplicative. And Commissioner Lowry and I participated in the last revision effort for all of the council policies. I know the whole purpose of that exercise was to eliminate the duplicative nature of the policies and other documents, codes, et cetera, and really fit everything out so that we don't have conflicting provisions and we don't have the duplicative references. So those are all of my comments and questions.
Tony one or Tony two?
K3 and whether this is the right place to put it. We'd have these discussions internally. And as much as this is a SEQA level analysis, so it is purely SEQA as far as it, SEQA requires a VMT study, we felt that was the right place to put it. Instead of making it its own policy and establishing a new policy, let's just put it into the existing SEQA procedures, policy, which is K3. So that was the approach there. I'm sorry you had some other thoughts. Not sure if I followed all the different ones you had, Commissioner Kleiman.
Yeah, just whether we've gone through, and maybe this is a question for city attorney, really, but whether we have checked our other documents for conflict and allowed for clarification or looked at potentially having to eliminate some of those conflicts so that we don't adopt something that is immediately upon adoption in conflict and create other sort of wave effects there. And if we do decide that this is the appropriate place, or I should say not we, but you've decided that this is the appropriate place to incorporate this, my other question is, do we need to incorporate the entire thing or are we really incorporating it by reference of the implementation guide? But if we are going to include the framework, it seems like it needs to be less of an afterthought and more of a comprehensive policy because it's just tacked on to the end and it doesn't, it's not provided for, for example, in the definitions section of the K3 policy. And just the other thing that I said was just that, like I said, Commissioner Lowry and I already participated in efforts to fin these out and it just seems like a lot.
Thank you. We did look at and evaluate whether a general plan amendment, or I should say whether the policy proposal was consistent with the general plan. At the time, determined that we didn't think it was necessary to make, you know, any amendments to the general plan in order to accommodate, you know, the VMT analysis here. So I think as the gentleman spoke, you know, we want to have some standards in place. We don't want to deviate too much from what the state is requiring at this point. Perhaps at a later date in time, once we have a little bit more of information available, we may add to that. But at this point, you know, K3 is an appropriate place to include that. And I think, you know, our experts have determined that what we have is sufficient.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last minute questions? Clarifications? Let's have a, let's see, we can go to a vote now on this resolution. Are we going to change anything? Don't think so. This is Resolution PC 2020-017.
Are we going to do it? Okay, guys, we got to finish up. Okay, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution. Not much we can do or we're pretty much forced into it. And if the city staff is helping fix that a little bit, make it a little less than what you have to do, then let's go with it.
Let's hear from a second, please. Oh, Commissioner Kleiman. Klaustmeyer.
I'll second.
Very good. All right. Ready for a vote? All those, I'm going to read the roll call. Rosine's gone. Kleiman?
Aye.
Klaustmeyer, you made a second. Was that an aye?
Aye.
Elmore?
Yes.
Lowry?
Aye.
Wiegand?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion passed 6-0, wanted one person absent. Thank you, Tony and Tony. Appreciate that. And we're going to move on quickly to get to staff commissioner items. Number five, motion for reconsideration. Once again, never heard of one. Item six, report by the community development director, matters which the commission members would, or place on a new item.
Thank you, Chair Ketting. Just real quick, thank you to the commissioners for staying late this evening. I apologize that we had a lot on the agenda. We just got a lot going on right now and this venue is kind of a, it's a slow format. So I do thank the commissioners for staying late. Real quick, next Tuesday is a city council meeting. They put out the agenda today. That council meeting will start at 4:00 PM for everybody that is watching. So traditionally it's seven, but for next Tuesday, the council meeting will start at 4:00 PM. They'll be addressing the topic of short-term lodging. In addition, they have the appeal item for 215 Riverside. So that'll be heard again by the city council. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Any items the commissioners would like to place on a future agenda? Hearing none, seeing none. Requests for excused absences? Good, everybody will be here. I call the meeting closed 10:38.